Okay, welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian. Tonight, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council or Deputy Mayor, John Aguilera, and then that will be followed by the invocation by David Rathkeber of the Office of the Vist...the Masonic Lodge, number 587.
Would you please rise and join me in honoring us, our nation's flag, please?
Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Creator of us all, at a time when we hear of so many wars and dangers, bigotry, hatred, disease, natural disasters and drought, we want to take just a moment to thank you for the many blessings that we do have. We ask that you help us to be mindful of the needs of those in these dangerous places and in places that have been afflicted, that we might be able to assist them, and we ask you bring your comfort to those and provide protection to those people who are serving in these faraway places. Father, we are grateful for our nation, our state, our county and our city, and for the leaders who have been placed in the position of stewardship over all that we have. And Father, we are grateful that there are so many good people regardless of political affiliations or ideology who try to do the right thing and support and maintain the citizenship and the people of our country. And Father, we ask your blessing on this meeting tonight, that we may remember that we're here for the betterment of our community and that all that we do will be aimed towards that goal. Lastly, Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to come here tonight and to discuss those things that we find beneficial and those things that we find could be made better. We are grateful for this opportunity. Thank you. Amen.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, there were actually no closed sessions held today, and so the first thing, we have a presentation. On June 24th, 2008, the Vista City Council adopted Marine Squadron 369, a helicopter squadron within the Marine Aircraft Group 39 based out of Camp Pendleton. Tonight, I welcome Lieutenant Colonel Jamie Federico, Sergeant Major Leary Ono Onafi, and Family Readiness Officer Crystal Gates to the podium to provide an update regarding the unit. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter, council members, citizens of the city of Vista. On behalf of the entire squadron, Marine Light Attack Helicopter Squadron 369, I'd like to thank you not only for your support but for the opportunity for us to come and give a quick presentation to the city about who we are and how your support is so helpful to us. Marine Light Attack Helicopter Squadron 369 is a Cobra and Huey helicopter squadron whose mission is to support ground forces by providing close air support, utility support, armed escort, blah, blah, blah. We fix and fly airplanes to support the Marines on the ground all over the world in any weather, day and night. Ultimately, we fix and fly airplanes. We have 425 Marines in our squadron as of this morning. We fly 20 aircraft of three different types, model, type, model and series. We fly approximately 9,000 flight hours per year, and over the last 10 years, we've been in Iraq, Afghanistan, on marine expeditionary units all over the Pacific. When we're home, we fly six to seven exercises per year away from Camp Pendleton in Twenty-Nine Palms, Yuma, Fallon, Nevada, all over the western, the western United States. The average age of our Marines is 23 years old. 197 of those Marines are married. Of those married Marines, most of those have children. You can see that with such a young average age and so many children, that the military lifestyle is a real challenge. 16 of those cities live in the city of Vista. We're very proud of the fact that we have Marines living here in the city, and they're especially proud of the fact that they're adopted by their home city. Average number of combat deployments, that is, overseas for our Marines is three. We have many Marines with as many as six and seven combat deployments. In particular, the, the support that we get from the city of Vista helps our family readiness program. With the obvious challenges to military life and the challenges to young families with many children, the support that we get from the city of Vista is absolutely invaluable. Some of the things that the city has provided, most recently, are support to a beach bash back in July, which was a huge success. The Wave Water Park has opened its doors to the city of, to the Marines of HMLA 369. Boomers has done days at their fun park for our families. In addition, we've gotten numerous, numerous generous donations for families in need, especially at Christmas time, et cetera. One of the things that, that we would like to do is, in the future, help foster more of a two-way relationship where we're working very hard with Cheryl Mast to find organizations where our Marines can come back into the city of Vista and volunteer, and that we have enduring relation, volunteer relationships with organizations who could use our, maybe just manpower, but use a relationship, volunteer relationship where the Marines come back, get a chance to get off base and do something fulfilling on the weekends that helps both the city and the Marines in return. So, I don't want to take much more of your time. I very much appreciate on behalf of every one of the 425 Marines in our squadron, the support that we've gotten from the city of Vista. I can't tell you how much it means to each and every one of us to know that we have a community that supports us, and if anyone has any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, I would just like to thank, you're thanking us, I would rather thank you because we appreciate all that you and your squadron have done for, for us here, so we very much appreciate you. Do I have anybody? Amanda, do you want to say something? Okay. Okay. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Next up is Brett Schassenbaum, Chief Executive Officer of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and he's going to present the 2013 Strawberry Festival Post-Event Report, which I'm sure is good.
2014 Post-Event Report?
Uh-oh. We lost our audiovisual. Just went out. Gone? Did you have?
I can, do you want me to juggle or dance, or?
Do you want to, should we go on and?
Do you want to go on and come back to it?
Okay. Oh, okay. Well, one, okay, well, we'll just, yes, that's done, we'll bring you back. What's going on, then, when they get the audiovisual fixed, we'll bring you back. So, tonight, we welcome Boy Scout Troop 722. The troop is here to observe our meeting as part of a requirement to earn their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. Where are they? Will they stand up? Some of them are back there in the back, I see some in the middle here. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our consent calendar, and the consent calendar, our items, hold on. Their recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the, from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar.
I would like to pull C-11.
Okay.
I was going to pull C-11 as well, thank you, and also C-13.
Okay, and also C-13. Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the balance.
Testing. It works.
Okay, it looks like we're back on. We just need our council members. Yeah, he says. Okay, we're back in business, now we're going to reconvene. Can I have everybody quiet, please? Okay, we're going to reconvene with Brett Schassenbaum, who's going to give us the event report of the Strawberry Festival.
Mine was the fourth year that we had the Chocolate Festival, and at that point, we had 150 booths, one entertainment stage, there were no real special contests or sub-events. The press coverage was very small, and about 20,000 attendees, excuse me. This year was our fifth year of the Strawberry Festival. We had 291 booths, seven entertainment stages, 15 different contests, 10K, 5K kids run, lots of press coverage, which I'll show you and talk about, and then 90,000-plus attendees is our estimate. So, it's grown quite a bit in the five years since we've converted it from the Chocolate Fest to the Strawberry Festival. I mentioned the attendance, 286 street fair vendors, which was a 14% growth from just last year, 2,272 runners, which was a 6% growth from the previous year, and the runners come from 16 different states, seven different counties within Southern California, and 23 different cities and unincorporated communities in San Diego County. So, we're getting a large cross-section of participation coming to downtown Vista, which of course is the point. The run, because we get some good data out of the run participants, we'd like to kind of dig in deeper. Of the 2,272 runners, 37% were from Vista, and 35% were from other cities along the 78 corridor, and obviously, these represent our best prospects to come back to downtown Vista to shop, to go to our restaurants, our breweries, our theaters, et cetera. 15% of the runners were from other parts of San Diego, 10% from other parts of Southern California, and then 1% northern, and 2% from out-of-state. And the out-of-staters were very interesting, as far as ways, like Boston, Massachusetts, Washington DC, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, I mean, all over the place, so a lot of interesting participation. We put this event out far and wide, I'm going to show you some of the results of our press distribution and our social media campaigns. We ended last year with about 1,000 people liking our strawberry Facebook page. By April, it was just up incrementally, but by May, you can see, the number of likes is still at 1,100, but the number of people talking about us is over 10,000 on Facebook. And in June, which is kind of the post-event wrap-up where everybody's continuing to put their pictures out there and talk about it, we had over 18,000 people talking about us on Facebook alone. We use a lot of other social media platforms as well. I can't say that I use them, but my PR firm does, you know, she tweets and pins and posts and does all these things, and it helps get the word out. So, we were on Instagram, Twitter, as well as Pinterest and YouTube. More videos than ever on YouTube, and that comes from individuals as well as us, taking videos of themselves, pictures of themselves, et cetera, et cetera. Our website gets just an amazing amount of traffic during May as the event gets to its peak. The Strawberry Fest website had over 5,100 page views, our Chamber website had over 8,700 page views, and our Run website had over 4,800 page views, so a lot of activity on our website. And, and this is where the numbers get really big. Online, we were mentioned over three and a half million times online, and then over 52 million impressions for the Strawberry Fest overall online as tracked by our PR firm, so that's a lot of exposure about this event, and I'm not going to, these are just there for the, if you want to go back later and look at some of those, I included them for you, but I'll show you just a couple. You see, this is one of the videos we did about the chalk art event, which is the first time we did the chalk art. That video went up on a site. Here, you see us on San Diegan, the San Diegan, and then here's just another sample of Channel 6 News. So, we were in a lot of places everywhere. We did some print advertising as well, the UT as well as the Seaside Courier, Coast News, San Diego Business Journal, so those are ads we paid for to get the word out. We also had some articles that were done about the event, cute little girl there from the UT, and then there was an article done, of course, on vistapress.com, which we appreciate. We had a lot of radio promotion this year, we traded for sponsorship with some stations, some of those stations who focus on the Hispanic market and some of those just general, and so we got a lot of airplay from the various stations, as you can see there from the statistics, and that helps, of course, drive our traffic. Our TV coverage was better than ever. We, the week of the event, I got invited down to the KUSI Morning Show, and I was able to take Bobby from Sunrise Cafe with me, and so he got to be on TV and promote his business as well. Friday of that week, Fox Morning Show came to downtown Vista and did four live sessions right there on Main Street. We were able to take them and interview Little Cakes, Lush Coffee, Fraser Farms, as well as some others, which was fantastic, just having them right there on Main Street in Vista. CW6 spent the entire morning of the festival at our event. Their newscaster was riding the carnival rides and was all over the place and showing off Vista, which was great. NKUSI was on-site that day as well, we're not going to talk about what they did, but, and then CBS8 did do a news report on us later that evening. We had stuff all over town, you probably saw it, over-the-street banners, posters, retail shirts, Kirkorian, we were everywhere, which is the intent, and of course, during the event, there's signage and shirts and strawberry stuff everywhere as well. But the economic impact, which we like to share, we try to survey businesses every year after the event, just to talk to them, what was the impact, positives, negatives. Paula and Kent went out and visited 50 different businesses, we had 11 return surveys, and some of the responses we have, which you can see there, Apothecary Off Main talked about how their foot traffic doubled compared to a typical Sunday, Urban Pizza, 15% up, Village Cafe, 50% more, and others there, which is, of course, the hope, that they are getting more business. We ourselves, of course, spend a lot of money to put this event on, we spent over $130,000 to host the event. 59% we spent in Vista, and another 21% spent in North County, so 80% spent extremely locally here to put the event on. We hope to continue this event, at this point, still as a one-day, centralized into the downtown. We'd like to get over 300 vendors in the next year and 2,500 runners, keep the run courses the same, which were received really well by the runners, and then maybe expand the contest if they don't kill me. That's our report, we appreciate the city's report, I'm open to any questions, I know you have a long agenda tonight, so.
Seeing no questions? Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
That's a great report, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great festival. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is C-11 revisions to standard conditions for use with applications to sell alcohol. I think, John, first, you pulled that. And then I also have a speaker.
Speaker first? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and speak. I just had, I had a question or concern about one of the items that's being addressed under restaurants, as our chamber just came up and, I guess, reported to us that we've, you know, Vista's really growing, one of the, the big things that's growing is our downtown. We're obviously trying to make it a meeting place for families and people, restaurants are going to be a big part of that, and I noticed that in the ordinance here, we're looking at banning happy hour, which I don't think is a smart thing for businesses that serve food. I'm not saying that I want to have happy hour at the bars and that type of thing, but I think we should include that for restaurants that actually serve food. This is one of the ways that a Chili's, El Callejon type of restaurant might attract business, so I'd like to see that changed on C-11. And I understand why that, that word, that verbiage, I guess, is in there right now, but, so, I'm okay if we want to have like some discretion from staff as to who can and can't have, you know, in other words, I know we do have some problem businesses that don't deserve to have a happy hour and shouldn't have a happy hour, so I'm okay if staff wants to say, you know, that they have to apply and staff or the city manager has to approve it, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I think that responsible businesses should be allowed to go ahead and discount their food and their drinks if they handle it in a responsible way.
I think, yeah, and they have senior discounts early, so maybe that would go along with that. I have a couple of speakers. Do you want to hear the speaker first, or do you guys want to? Okay, okay, it's Erica Leary. Erica? I don't see her.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I just have a few things I'd like to share, just really quick regarding the happy hour. I would hope that happy hours are possible without being discounted alcohol, so food, food discounts could be a way to do a happy hour without making alcohol cheap. Another thing to consider is that we're seeing in Oceanside and some other cities, businesses having late-night happy hours till midnight, and that may be a concern for increasing DUIs and something you want to discuss. I'm here before you, my name is Erica Leary, I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, which is fiscally managed by the Vista Community Clinic, and our mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside and Vista through community action, education, support and collaboration. I've been here, I'm going to try to keep this really short, so, you know, I really support your new Vista plan and the inclusion of the healthy Vista element, particularly the goal to strive to reduce problems associated with alcohol and drug abuse when developing your programs, policies and practices, and I think this effort to standardize conditions is a good move in that direction. We recognize the role that local officials like yourselves can play in reducing alcohol problems and preventing underage drinking. I would hope, though, that standardized conditions doesn't necessarily mean you automatically approve every new license that comes before you and also take into account over saturation and crime rates in neighborhoods where businesses come. A couple of questions regarding the standard conditions that I have. One is I don't see separate descriptions for drugstores like Rite-Aids, Walgreens and CVS. You have a number of new, of those businesses in town lately, so just want to make sure that there's a way to include those businesses in the minor use permit process. And also regarding the age of sellers, I noticed in the gas station mini-marts, there's an added condition requiring sellers to be 21, which I think is a, a good preventive tool. However, it's not in the convenience store and liquor store conditions, and I did have a chance to relook at an old study done by the Crime Prevention Staff a few years ago, where they compared alcohol theft rates from 2009 and 2010, and convenience and gas stations were the highest percentage, passes graph round, representing, I believe, 40% of thefts, but it didn't differentiate whether or not those places had gas stations, so that could be a condition that is warranted for any convenience store. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. So, I have a couple of speakers here. John, you're still, your name is still there, have you already spoken?
Yeah, I'm going to speak again, but.
Okay.
Listen to the speakers.
Madam Mayor, it's me.
Who's talking?
Ally.
Ally, okay.
Before we hear from the other council members, if you don't mind, can I clarify what Deputy Mayor Aguilera is, so we all are talking on the same thing.
Can we hear staff's report on this?
Would you like a staff?
Were you going to give one?
If.
To begin with?
If, if requested, yeah.
Would you like one? Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. Here with me tonight is Cheryl Mast, our Management Analyst, and she'll provide a brief report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As approved by the city council, a list of standard mitigating conditions is used by staff for processing both alcoholic beverage control license applications and minor use permit alcohol applications. permit alcohol applications. Staff reviews the list of conditions on an annual basis to identify and remove conditions that were codified into state law and to prepare new conditions that may help mitigate impacts of new licenses to the community. Most of the proposed changes before you tonight ensure consistency with City Council identified priorities. For example, the conditions allowing sales of alcohol for limited hours and prohibiting the sale of alcohol in bottles less than 100 milliliters, commonly referred to as airline bottles, were added to some categories. The most significant change proposed is to revise the condition prohibiting live entertainment. The new language reads, "Live entertainment and/or dancing is prohibited unless a specific live entertainment permit is issued to the owner." Without revising this language, applicants who receive a live entertainment license would be required to apply for a modification of their alcohol minor use permit, which requires a payment of a $2,112 fee. Application of some conditions requires staff discretion, such as location-based regulation of alcohol advertising or allowable hours of alcohol sales during open business hours of operation. As identified in the authorizing resolution, staff recommends the City Council approve revisions to the standard conditions for use with applications to sell alcohol and that authority be given to the city manager or zoning administrator to apply those conditions as warranted. That concludes staff's presentation.
And Ally, do you want to address those other things?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, Deputy Mayor Aguilera was talking about happy hours at restaurants, correct?
Yes, correct.
So for, so this would apply to the MUP conditions on pages 25 of 30, 26 of 30, and 28 of 30 only.
Correct. Those are the pages I have highlighted here.
I just wanted to clarify.
Let me check one more thing. Yes. But Ms. Leary brought up a really good point that I would like to include as well. I think we probably should limit it between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM only.
Happy hour?
Yeah.
At the council's discretion, we can apply anything. We can put that in the use permit.
Yeah.
No late night happy hours.
I don't want late night happy hour. That's not the intent.
Sure.
And I don't think the restaurants are really looking to do that, but I think if we throw that in there, it would be backup.
Would it be seven days a week? Or with, up to seven days a week? Or do you want to also limit the days?
No, that's fine. That's up to the businesses to decide.
4:00 PM to, I'm sorry.
Four to eight.
Four to eight, okay.
I mean, they can do whenever they want. They can do five to seven, they can do.
Yeah, between those hours. But seven days a week, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll move on here to, I have several speakers, so we'll start with Cody.
So.
Councilmember Campbell.
Ally, you answered the question that I was going to ask you, which was regarding Councilman Aguilar's comment about the no happy hour. But one of the aspects about any of the MUPs that are required, the applicant can request modifications of that as well on an individual basis, is that correct?
Yes, they can. However, the MUP that was put into place earlier this year by the council is a streamlined MUP with a very low fee that basically asks the applicant to accept the conditions as proposed, because that is what takes the least amount of staff time, and that's what we're trying to recover. If they would like a modification, it triggers the larger MUP, which is the $2,000 one that Cheryl referenced. Or even further modifications could potentially trigger the SUP, which is what we were trying to avoid. So yes, however, there could be an additional cost that we were trying to avoid.
Right. And I think that the streamlined MUP that we put in place is more efficient for probably 90-plus percent of the businesses that would be seeking it. So I guess my concern is, what we have on the table is that, I'll ask Deputy Mayor Aguilera, are you wanting to replace the text where it says no happy hour type of reduced price alcoholic beverage is allowed with other language?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be in the streamlined MUP process? Or would you rather?
Yeah, it's going to be in the streamlined MUP process with the caveat that staff can reject, because I'm sure we have some businesses that are not responsible. You know, so if they have issues with sheriff or sheriff has issues with them, then they won't get it.
Okay.
So it'll be at staff's discretion.
So would, can we, would you be amenable to leaving the language as is with an exception for within the streamlined MUP process, not requiring the $2,000 fee, putting a caveat that that particular, only that particular item could be reviewed at staff's discretion? So that it's not a staff has to deny it, but it's a staff grants the approval? So it's not an automatic approval in the MUP? So it's, they're not allowed, but the applicant could request a review by staff for approval? That, to me, might be a little bit more of an efficient way to process it, so that that request is reviewed by staff and is discretionary at that point.
So Deputy Mayor Aguilera, we could write something similar to no happy hour is permitted unless staff has made the determination based on statistics and review to allow it. So it's a no, maybe yes versus a yes.
I'd like to hear from my other council members first.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Deputy Mayor Aguilera. That was one of the items that I wanted to discuss as well. It was about happy hour. And I think I wouldn't want to have it say no happy hour unless it would say happy hour as permitted. Some other language would probably be okay to staff's discretion. But I don't think that in across-the-board no happy hour, to me, that just seems very restrictive for the businesses and our residents. I think it should be permissible for responsible business owners as well as responsible residents. And to that end, I'm going to take this a little step further, because I think we've talked enough about happy hour and the language that we'd like to see in it. But also the, and before I leave, though, it does, it talks about it at Bar nightclub, which is 23 of 30, 25 of 30 restaurant, restaurant with bar, and then also over at microbreweries and wineries. So there are four different places in this staff report that talks about that. So I'd like to revisit all of those four places regarding happy hour at staff's discretion with language that identifies that it might be an option, it's not guaranteed, basically is where we're going with that.
So to clarify, you would like to allow happy hour based on, you know, staff discretion at any of the alcohol establishments?
I think so. I don't see a need for restricting that unless staff discretion with the sheriff's department deems that that is not an appropriate place or business to have that. That would be where discretion comes in. But the other question I had on that, too, is that all of these say no pool or billiard tables. And I know that there are times where, you know, shooting a game of pool while watching a sporting event might be a nice Sunday afternoon. And I know that the Vista Entertainment Center has alcohol and pool tables. And I was going to ask what the, if discretion or crime rate is an issue, if we could have some information on what the crime rate is over at the Vista Entertainment Center, where they do have a pool table with alcohol? Do we have that information? And is that one of the reasons why you've put in here that no pool tables or billiards allowed at any of these establishments?
They're grandfathered, aren't they?
The Vista Entertainment Center is grandfathered in. We don't have the statistics in front of you. We do have a, they, so they're old, so they do not have the types of conditions that have been placed on more recent businesses.
No, I know they're grandfathered, but I'm thinking there's a reason that is put in here, and I'd like to know what particularly the reason is.
And I don't have an answer for you on that. These conditions are the ones that have been approved by the City Council year over year? They were put in place more than a decade ago, and as we bring them back annually, they've just never been revised otherwise. We just, now that we are applying them in the MUP scenario, you see it over and over again, because it's no longer just as a part of the ABC license. But the condition has been on the books for many, many years. I, I don't, I don't know why it was put on to begin with, but it was within a different council at an earlier time.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can interject, I think during the '90s, as well as the early 2000s, we had some problems with places that acted like bars, that had pool tables and other establishments or other fixtures like that.
Councilmember Coles.
And thank you, staff, for reviewing some very delicate language in an area that we really do need to keep fairly good control over. Our city's been growing, the restaurants are flourishing, the microbrewery industry is flourishing, and alcohol consumption is something that we need to be very careful about with regard to the environment that we're developing for our city. And I don't disagree. I think there is room for happy hour. I would limit it to the establishment that serves food, as opposed to just some of the drink-only establishments. And happy hour, I don't want to get too far afield and have it run for, you know, four to six hours, or four to eight, maybe a little long. I would, I would prefer to see something more in line with what it was originally intended when, when that promotion started years ago somewhere in the, in the world. And it was a happy hour. It was an incentive for people to come early, you know, buy their food, have a drink, and be on their way. I would favor something more along the lines of, you know, two hours or, you know, five to seven, or something that really did make it, as it was intended originally, to be an incentive. I also agree with giving discretion by staff, as was suggested, in providing the approval, that it's not just blanket, that establishments have to show to our city and to our leaders that they are responsible in how they handle this kind of consumption, because there is a danger. We have a lot of, we have problems with youth and alcohol consumption and other abuse of mind-altering substances. And so I just want to keep, I don't want to say no, but I would like to keep a little bit tighter control over, over how we proceed. Now, whether or not we can rewrite this here from our comments, or whether this needs to come back with some of the revisions that we've suggested, I don't know. Not the best way to proceed. I don't know that there, we've reached consensus here that we could vote on, but.
If you'd like, I could suggest some language, and then you can potentially fill in the blanks with the hours that you might prefer, if you don't mind. So as Ms. Zimmerman was stating.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just, yeah, I was going to try to put it all together.
Okay.
See if I can.
Put it together.
But if you can do it, John.
I don't think we're going to bring this all together, but how about happy hour type of reduced? Happy hour, okay. Happy hour is allowed. I'm going to use simple terms here. I'll let the lawyers figure out how to say it legally. But happy hour is allowed at the determination of staff and the city manager. And only between the hours of four and seven? Okay.
What if we, you don't want to have it all the way four to eight, four hours, but what if you can let the restaurants decide which two hours within that timeframe would work for them?
I'm good with that.
That's a good idea.
I can accept that. Yeah. Between four and eight, just whichever two hours they decide, but two hours max.
Yep, that's good.
And of course, maybe rescinded by staff or city manager, I guess, probably has to do that upon any violations.
So happy hour type of reduced price alcoholic beverage promotion is allowed at the determination of staff and the city manager for two hours.
Hours max.
Between the hours of four and eight.
The hours of four and eight.
And maybe rescinded by the city manager upon any violation of law or increase in law enforcement activities?
Right.
Okay.
Could we include places with food that serve food, rather than just a bar?
Yeah, I still really want to stick with the restaurants to start with. I think, I think we're going in uncharted, well, it's not uncharted, unfortunately. I mean, there's other cities that have had problems with this. So I think, I'd rather see it only at establishments that serve food. Breweries that serve food. An example would be, I guess, Prohibition serves food. But other restaurants like Chili's, El Callejon, typical restaurants, that type of thing.
So if the City Council comes to agreement on the language, then separately, you can decide on which of the MUP categories to apply it to?
Okay.
So I think those are two separate issues for, upon the dais.
And we've heard, too, so examples, restaurant, restaurant with a bar, microbreweries with restaurants, and then other establishments that don't include food.
How about microbreweries with food trucks?
No.
Okay. Just clarifying. Okay. Okay.
I mean, I have a food truck that day.
So do we need to vote on that? This whole thing?
Well, I think.
I just wanted to talk about the pool table, is that, and billiards. When we get some crime statistics and some more information to fill in the blanks on that, can we revisit that? I would like to revisit that portion of this item.
And we can, we can get those statistics from the sheriff's department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, do we need to vote on it? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, a motion is to.
First on the language.
All the things you just said.
Just, you want me to repeat the language, or?
Sure.
Okay.
I can repeat it if you would like.
Yeah, please.
All right. So the modification to the condition related to happy hour would read, "Happy hour type of reduced price alcoholic beverage promotion is allowed at the determination of staff and the city manager based on acceptable statistics related to community impact and may be rescinded by the city manager upon any violations of the law or related increase to law enforcement statistics."
And a maximum of two hours?
That's right. I'm sorry. And happy hour would be allowed between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM for a maximum of two hours.
Correct.
Got it?
Yes.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second that motion.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We're moving very slowly today.
Yeah. Long night.
And then the direction from council, though, for food establishments only.
Yes.
Okay. The next, the next item on our agenda will be item C13, which is the sale of successor agency, community development commission, and city properties. And that was pulled by Councilmember Rigby. So I'll turn it over to you, Councilmember Rigby.
Staff report for, no?
Everybody stop. Before we move on from item C11, we need to go back and adopt the resolution, the City Council resolution approving the revisions to the standard conditions, which we forgot to do. So could I have a motion for that?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Yeah, the recommended action is adopt the City Council Resolution Number 2014-approving revisions to the standard conditions. So all the revisions that we just did in there, that's.
That's the meat of it.
Right.
We just worked on the bone of it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Now, to the next thing, Councilmember Rigby.
Yes, and if we could have staff report on this one? This is regarding the sale of successor agency, community development commission, and city properties. Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer.
Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is John Meyer. I'm the redevelopment and housing director. For your consideration, this evening is the sale of five properties. Two of them are owned by the successor agency. They are located at 150 East Broadway and 430 Vista Village Drive. We are recommending that you accept the offer of $315,000 from Tideline Partners for the Broadway location and the offer of $365,000 from Vince Tran for the Vista Village location. Both of these buyers intend to use these properties as offices. The property located at 230 South Santa Fe is owned by the Community Development Commission. Staff is recommending that you accept the offer of $630,000. Staff is recommending that you accept the offer of $630,000, and the buyer intends to use this as a restaurant. The last two properties are owned by the City of Vista. The first location is 211 Palm Drive and 902 Vista Village Drive. These are the two properties that flank Palm Drive at the Vista Village intersection. And we are recommending you accept the offer of $680,000 for both of them. The buyer intends to build multifamily units there. The last property for your consideration is 2076 and 2082 Thibodeau Road. We recommend that you accept the offer for $340,000, and the buyer intends to use the property for commercial or office uses. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Council member Rigby.
Thank you. The questions I had on this were regarding the appraisals that were done on these properties, and when the appraisals were done for the sale of these. Are, I know at the last meeting you had those gentlemen here. Are they here tonight to answer questions?
I can, I can answer the question, but we do have representatives from Lean Associates in attendance tonight.
Okay, so that was one of my questions, was when, when were the appraisals done for these properties?
The appraisals for all of the properties were done at the time they were being purchased. So if you look at the dates in the staff report, I don't know if I need to go through every one of them, but typically when a redevelopment agency is buying property, we have to buy it at fair market value, and we use an appraisal to determine what fair market value is.
Right. My only objection to this is I think we should have the same when we're dealing with taxpayer money, and we're having to sell properties and getting the best return that we can for the taxpayers that paid for it in the first place. And I know that redevelopment was legislated into oblivion, and that we've been mandated to sell these properties, but I also know that there's no deadline to sell these. And I hate to see them be sold at a loss again, so that's where my objection comes in. But I thank staff, and I thank your realtors for the work that they've done on this.
Do I have any other speakers to this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes with one no vote. Okay, moving on. Our next, a next item on our agenda is our discussion item. It's the G8 Disposition and Development Agreement. And I have several speakers to that. Do you want to hear the speakers first, and then have a report? Okay, let's, let's have the staff report first, and then do the speakers. Okay? Okay, staff report first.
Thank you, Mayor. John Conley, Community Development and Engineering Director. With me I have Mr. Meyer, successor agency director. This is a discussion item regarding the disposition and development agreement for G8. It's a review of a proposal by G8 to develop a parking structure on city-owned property. It would require an amendment to the disposition and development agreement that we currently have with them between the city and successor agency and the developer that was approved in June of 2008. The DDA establishes a plan to develop the 1.29 acre site at the corner of Main Street in Santa Fe with a mixed-use project, and does not currently identify any plan for off-site parking. The project site is shown in the overhead in red. This is the site for which the DDA currently applies, that the developer is committed to building a mixed-use project on. The area in the orange between North Indiana and Michigan on the south side of Vista Village is a city-owned parking lot for which the developer is proposing to build a parking deck. It's about eight point, I'm sorry, .86 acre. The existing parking lot was developed when Vista Village Drive was realigned approximately 1998. It currently consists of a paved lot with 33 spaces that are available to the public, some trash enclosures for the businesses in front of the building, or in front of the parking area, landscaping, and access through a one-way lane through the alley between the two side streets. It's also the fronting area for the Vistacato mural, which was painted several years back along the whole backside of this building. The proposal that was submitted by G8 is included in your packet. This shows the lower-level parking lot, which would be accessed off of the side street of Indiana, and the upper-level parking lot, which would be accessed off of Vista Village Drive, and would be a deck above the lower level. G8 anticipates that the parking structure would provide 45 spaces on the ground floor and 63 spaces on the second floor for a total of 108 spaces. They propose that the city retain 30 spaces for public use, with the remaining 78 spaces dedicated to their project, which would accommodate the commercial development within their project. G8 proposes that the city lease the property to G8 for $1 a year and pay an annual maintenance cost of 38% of the parking structure. The staff is requesting the city council's direction regarding a possible amendment to the DDA, and we're providing these three options. That the council negotiate an amendment with the DDA and a lease between the city and G8 for the off-site structure, to reject the proposal to build an off-site structure on city property and continue working with the developer on the mixed-use project, or reject the proposal and terminate the development agreement with G8. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have speakers. We have one, two, seven speakers, so we'll start with the speakers. First one will be Robert Mance, followed by Maya Rosas.
My name is Robert Mance. My company, Ford Mance Capital Advisors, practices community, economic, and real estate strategies. I'm a member of the CVBID Advisory Board, the vice president of the VVBA, and the committee chair of the Economic Restructuring Committee. I too am a member of the board of the Urban Land Institute, and have hosted pointed luncheon programs about transit-oriented development and financing solutions, always with Vista Village in mind. I'm a seasoned entrepreneur and a futurist. Tonight, each of you has an opportunity to invest in solving the parking problem perceived to be in the downtown specific plan area. Your decision will send a message to the development, investment, and building business community about the future of the Business Improvement District. John Conley, Director of Planning, has engaged Claudia Teford, Principal of City Place Planning, to update Vista's downtown specific plan, create a long-term parking management plan, and foster culture and arts programs in the district through land use that enables and encourages creativity. The VVBA adopted the district's brand identity as being Vista Village, cool place, warm welcome. Maureen Barrett is preparing to host the first Alley Art Festival Saturday, September 13th, which is an interactive art and culture experience. These efforts will foster new customers, new businesses, new business, new opportunities, and new investment. Parking won't be a problem if we have a plan how to accommodate increased people and join their experiences here. Approving the staff's request to leasehold the parking lot behind the Vistacato mural building is the way to get started. I learned about SB 375, legislation passed in 2008 several years ago, but was unfamiliar with its reason for being. Fundamentally, SB 375 is intended to guide more sustainable land use and development decisions through coordination at the state, regional, and local level. The result will help deliver on the bill's goals of regional connectivity, policy alignment, efficient provision of infrastructure, and improved environmental quality. Because SB 375 is relatively unknown to some and misconstrued by others, myths about SB 375 would be dispelled by engagement, communication, and dialogue.
Your time is up. And I'm gonna hold everybody to their three minutes today, because we have a lot of, a lot of business tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Maya Rosas, followed by John Allsweed.
Hello. Is there a clock?
Right there, when it turns yellow, you have, what, two, thirty?
Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Maya Rosas with Circulate San Diego and the Move Alliance. The Move Alliance provides formal endorsement for proposed projects that demonstrate a commitment to creating, preserving, and enhancing sustainable transit-oriented communities in the San Diego region. As part of this endorsement process, Circulate San Diego collaborates with a coalition of members, partner organizations, and individuals with expertise in the areas of sustainable transit-oriented development, in order to independently evaluate each project for Move Alliance endorsement. The Move Alliance endorsement for the G8 City of Vista-Santa Fe Station Mixed-Use Project is based on the project's mix of residential and retail uses, immediate proximity to the Santa Fe Station, and amenities such as widened sidewalks, improved street scape, and a courtyard that will create a social hub for the residents and community. The development will also provide long-term transit passes to residents, an innovative and highly effective mechanism to reduce the need for car ownership. Circulate San Diego's transit-oriented development guiding principles recommends the elimination of parking minimums to encourage development and increase housing affordability. It also encourages the revision of off-street parking requirements, especially in TOD areas like this one. It is essential for Vista and the region's success to recognize and use these guidelines so that development around our transit system is more efficient, accessible, and sustainable. According to the 2013 Inventory of Local Parking Policies in the San Diego region released by Sandag, the suggested smart-growth parking rates for residential multifamily development is 1.25 parking spaces per dwelling unit. For a comparison in North County, multifamily residences with two-bedroom units in Escondido are required to provide 1.75 parking spaces per dwelling unit, plus one additional spot for every four dwelling units, whereas Vista requires more, with two parking spaces per dwelling unit, plus an additional spot for every two dwelling units. This information is in the packet that I'm leaving here with the city clerk. The City of Vista's parking requirements are the highest in both the North County inland and North County coastal subregions. In conclusion, the Move Alliance has endorsed this project for its contribution to Vista as a sustainable transit-oriented development. A smart approach to growth is to leverage the assets Vista has, such as the Transit Center and the unique experience of the central compact commercial center that is Vista Village. We look forward to the completion of G8's development and would like to encourage the city to reduce the parking requirements in order to provide certainty and encourage development of innovative mixed-use projects. Please approve the leaseholding of this property to G8 and make the investment in the future of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. John Allsweed, followed by Chris Wasburton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Allsweed, 138 Civic Center Drive. I'm not here to support the G8 project or not. I'm, I'm here as a, someone who was born in Vista longer ago than I want to think, but nonetheless, am more excited now about the direction of our city and our downtown in particular than I've ever been. I would just, I'm excited to see you thinking about options that are somewhat out of the box, and being creative in various ways to get this accomplished. I'm not, I'm not convinced that parking is as important as a lot of us have, you know, grown to understand over the years with some of the, the older codes and the older regulations, but I know that if I go into downtown Carlsbad, and it's a battle to find a parking space, I don't leave. I find a parking space, and I walk, and I'm, I'm okay with it. So I think Vista is, has the ability now to make a, an exponential move. I would encourage you to be creative, whether it's this or something else, and not lose the momentum and the synergy that you created here in the last couple of years. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chris? It's Wasburton, followed by Stephen Fitch, and I'm gonna give these guys a little more time if, if you need it, because they're representatives of the developer, G8.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Chris Warburton with G8 Development. I'm here today to encourage the City of Vista to work together with us to get the Santa Fe Station project built. This TOD mixed-use project is important to the city, of course, due to its location. With its proximity to the public transportation, the project has a perfect opportunity to create a walkable community with a strong sense of place. I think the city should require the same elements for parking that were called out in the original RFP and the adopted downtown specific plan when the RFP was accepted back in 2008, 2009. I'm bringing this up now, too, because I didn't see that in the agenda report. The RFP required a minimum of one space per residential unit and one space per 500 square feet of commercial. Then the plan was changed in 2010, and now we see additional 90 spaces being required. If you subtract those 90 spaces, I think we look at a whole different picture of this project. If you include the proximity to the Sprinter Station and the bus system, the TOD guidelines, this project should be streaming right along. I recommend that you ask the staff to work with us to the original parking requirements, and we'll get the project done. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Fitch, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Steve Fitch. I'm the attorney for G8 Development. Rather than with the presentation, I think Mr. Warburton and Mr. Choder, who's going to be also speaker, I'm gonna allow them to talk, will be available for any questions that the council may have for this project.
Okay. Philip Choder, do you want to come and speak? And then, and then Cliff, I'll hold you till after the...
I am Philip Choder, G8 Development, and I just wanted to answer any questions you might have about the project. We've worked long and hard on this, and we are so close at this point. If we can just get this parking issue resolved. This has been a thorn in our side. You know, the guidelines or the requirements were changed in 2010, and we're being held to those standards, and it's not what we started this project under. So if you have any questions.
So anybody have any questions of him right now? No? No questions right yet? Okay. In that case, I will, Cliff Kaiser. Cliff, you have two, you have two requests to speak here, both the same issue?
Yeah, I was hoping to get six minutes, but that's all right. Pat told me I only get three.
Hey.
So first off, I'm here officially on behalf of the Vista Village Business Association, the Downtown Association, as president of that organization. And we have reviewed this development a couple of times. Once in, in December, we had a developer and the city present to us what the plans were. We had many of our merchants together in one room to express their opinions. We also did a survey recently via online internet survey, and asked the same question, what do you think about this development? The bottom line is that there's overwhelming support for the development, and of course, the issue is how are we gonna handle the parking? I'd also like to, you know, remind us all that the downtown specific plan is under development or revision, which includes a long-range parking management plan. So it seems like we're close to at least understanding the parking problem downtown better, but we still got this parking management plan that's just not quite finished yet. With regards to the survey, I sent it to the staff, and I'm hoping that, that you guys have had a chance to, to review some of those comments, but I'll, I'll touch on a couple of them. First off, parking at the Kerkorian on the weekend is still very challenging. So we've, we've, we've tried and we've failed in the past as a city to adequately address parking in, in at least one part of the downtown area. I'm part of the Parks and Recs Commission, and Bill Fortmueller mentioned recently at one of those meetings that people coming to the AVO performances during the fall and winter seasons, they're tending to make comments that they don't want to come because parking's not good in downtown Vista. So that's anecdotal, but still important to note. One merchant said that with traffic on South Santa Fe going down to two lanes, and then we're having residential down there, are we creating a bigger problem without really looking at, at this day, day and time, what we're trying to do in the downtown Vista? And again, all these merchants... And again, all these merchants that I've talked to and surveyed said they liked the idea. They want that corner developed. But are we going to have to park a half a mile away? Are we going to have to park across Santa Fe over at the transit station and try to navigate across that busy road, which becomes a concern? There was also concern expressed, if we build that parking structure behind the Cam Shell Hoops Place and Mother Earth and all that stuff like that, is that going to create a security or policing issue there that is worse than we already have some areas in downtown that need some attention? So I encourage you to take a look at those comments or get a copy of that survey report, and then let me take my VVBA badge off for just a second.
Okay.
And give you just two comments, a couple of comments. One is, I think it's great that the city has stepped forward and tried to offer a collaborative solution by offering this parking structure behind the buildings at Shell Hoops and Mother Earth. But as the developer has mentioned, there's been many changes over the years, and it's unfortunate for him and for Vista that we changed the rules midway. Okay? People have become accustomed to that parking, free parking, that 110-space parking lot, but we really need to know what is the parking challenge down there. Let's not rush to kill this or move it forward, but we need to make it happen. It's supported within the merchants. Let's figure out collaboratively what the parking solution is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That completes our speakers. Council? Do we have anything? Do we hear a report from the staff? You already did, right? Okay. Nobody's talking. Do you have any... Does anyone have any thoughts about this? Councilmember Campbell?
So, as some of the speakers said, I think that this is a very crucial property in Vista. It has the potential to bring even more revitalization to downtown Vista. But I'm concerned about a couple of issues. One is, parking is a problem downtown currently, but when you go to other cities downtown San Diego, Carlsbad, Oceanside, Carlsbad, as one of the speakers said, you don't see people driving through and leaving the area because parking is bad. What many times I look at is, when parking is challenging in downtown areas, that's a sign of a vibrant downtown, or having growth in economic activity. But we have to balance that with the residential component of this project and making sure that the project can park all of the cars from the tenants that are living there. So I have a question for staff, especially so that the public can have a better understanding. Can you walk me through sort of what the original project requirements on the RFP was, and then kind of where we're at today with the parking standards for this development?
Sure. The original RFP allowed for one space per residential unit, and I believe it was one space per 500 square feet of commercial space. In 2010, when we adopted the downtown-specific plan, we reference our citywide parking standards, which are frankly quite a bit higher. It depends on the number of bedrooms, but it's, you know, two and a half spaces for a two-bedroom, for example, and commercial spaces are four per thousand or one per 250, so twice the amount of commercial parking.
Okay. And then I know that this issue, this development, has gone before the Planning Commission before in terms of they were looking at an automated parking system. Even with that system, would that have met the parking standards currently within the specific plan?
This project was heard by the Planning Commission in 2013, so my memory's not completely clear on the exact requirement, but they did propose an automated structure at that time. If I remember correctly, the automated system would have accommodated their parking needs, with the exception of a few spaces, it was just barely short, and they were asking for some additional street parking, I believe, on Indiana to make up the difference. But the commission was not supportive of an automated system for a number of reasons.
So if we, as the council, looked to have a modified parking requirement for this particular project, maybe the developer could answer this question, is this development ready to move forward? Is parking the only holdup? Or are there other factors at play for this project?
Parking is the only issue. It's ready to move forward. If we get Planning Commission approval, we'll start on the working drawings and move this project forward, so...
Question for you. Do you have financing in place to move it forward?
Well, we have talked to numerous people that are willing to finance this, Lisk, you know, with their new market tax credits will finance it. You know, we've talked to numerous people in New York and Los Angeles, and their first question is, is do you have your discretionary permits out of the way? And our answer is always, no, we expect to have them shortly. And nobody will make any commitment. We can't start doing anything on the financing until we have this approval, so people know that this is a certainty, that this is going to go.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I want to interrupt here. What is the cost for that parking structure that you're talking about, building?
Oh, we haven't ran the cost on it, but this should be about the cheapest you're ever going to build a parking structure. That's all this is going to be, is open columns and a deck, and you're coming in off of Vista Village and off of Indiana, so there's really no ramping or anything of that nature. It's very, very inexpensive to build. I would think it's probably going to run, you know, maybe 15 bucks a foot on it.
So, how about cost for maintenance? If you don't know what it's going to cost to build it, do you know what it's going to cost to maintain it?
The cost of maintaining this shouldn't be that much. I mean, what you have out there now is probably more expensive because it's asphalt and everything. This is all going to be concrete surfaces and everything, and it isn't going to deteriorate in a road if somebody has a leaking car or something like that.
Can I finish?
Sure.
My concerns are that, well, first of all, you don't know the cost of a major component that we're talking about here.
Well, I can tell you what parking garages cost, but as far as what this is going to cost, we designed this as cheap as it could possibly be. There's going to be steel columns and spancrete deck on the thing, and you're not going to get any cheaper than that, so I'd say 15, 20 bucks a foot on it, and we should be in business because it's going to be very open and very easy to build and no ramps.
So, my other concerns is, you know, the dollar per year that you're going to pay the city for parking, and then asking the city to pay for 38% of the maintenance of this facility. The city, in exchange for that, loses three parking spaces, and you've heard the concerns already about parking for some of our existing businesses, so that's my concern.
Well, we can remedy that. We would just take off a few more, feed a commercial, or take off one of the two-bedroom units, and we would be there, and the city wouldn't be losing three units then.
I'm still concerned.
Did you have more, Cody?
I do. Deputy Mayor Aguilera actually covered a lot of my points that I was going to ask, is, you know, we're dealing with kind of generalities here in terms of it won't be very much, it's maintenance costs. We don't... It's very difficult for us to say, yeah, we're going to agree to pay 38% of maintenance costs, but we don't know what that is. You know, right now, it was proposed in here, losing three parking spaces, you're looking at, even if this was to go through and the parking is set, you know, as the city manager asked, there's not financing in place for the project. So, you know, I've got some concerns on the viability of this particular proposal. And, you know, the city would lease the property to G8 for 99 years, but, you know, in here, it says state law permits a maximum of 55 years. So I think there's some issues currently with this. I'm very supportive of moving a project forward that revitalizes downtown Vista. One of the questions for staff in regards to the proposed parking deck, would that not require the agreement of individual property owners within that area that might be affected by that?
The property that the parking deck is proposed on is all owned by the city, so it would just require an agreement between the city and the developer.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. As far as the financing, you know, this is basically a situation like if you were a house buyer and you went in to get a loan approval, it's pretty difficult for them to approve the property and stuff like that, you know, when you haven't got the property under contract, you haven't got a purchase signed on it, and we're faced in the same situation, you know, without having Planning Commission approval on this. Nobody even wants to talk to us about it because we're wasting their time and we're wasting our time. And this is such a good project, I feel we are not going to have any difficulty getting this financed. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my colleagues that we're talking in some generalities here, and we don't have as many of the details as we would like to have before us. I do think that parking is a problem. I do agree that we need to do something in that corner lot, develop it, but I'm not sure this is the project that I'm looking for, and particularly with the parking structure behind Mother Earth and those buildings back there. I don't want to see that driving down the major thoroughfare through Vista. I don't want to see the backside of a parking structure, so that's not something I'm looking for. And I understand it kind of goes down a little bit because the parking lot itself starts a little bit lower than street level, but in any case, this just isn't something that I'm looking to have done. I do know that we need to do something, but this isn't really, really what I'm looking for, but thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, well, the parking structure itself, you know, that's, when you drive in, you're going to be at street level, and the only thing you're going to see in the distance or toward the stores is some railings and stuff to separate it, so to me, it's not going to be obnoxious or anything.
Well, I appreciate that, but I also don't like the idea of leasing it to you for a dollar and then us paying for all the maintenance on it. I think that's not a good deal for our taxpayers. And the other question I have for you is, excuse me, one sec, I'm not finished. I'm looking at your exhibit regarding the approved commercial and retail tenants, and the names that are on here are names that I know that we've tried to get into Vista before, and if you think you can get them in here, I'd like to know why are they not filling up some of the empty space over in the Kerkorian Center or somewhere else already here in the city? So I'm not sure. I think this is very ambitious, what you have projected here. So, anyway, but I do thank you for your coming here and answering questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yes. Well, we're all experiencing kind of a new growth and revitalization in Vista, and especially in the downtown part of Vista, and I want us to be very careful about how we proceed with trying to crowd in more quantity into less space. We have a lot of people here tonight who are suffering from that same problem because we just have a lot of people wanting to come to Vista for many reasons, our downtown activities, some of our nice residential areas, and some of the attractions that we have here. I just hate for us to compromise the parking, exacerbate what we currently have as parking problems in the downtown area of Vista. I think this is a... The concept that we were going after when this began was to really develop a commuter-friendly area that could expand the growth and the activity downtown with easy access to rapid transit and some of the other restaurants and housing that's growing in that area. This plan just... It's been in the works for a long time, and nothing has ever seemed to gel. The financing is a little iffy. The matter of the parking structure has gone through a number of permutations, none of which have really satisfied our planning department or our Planning Commission, and I rely a lot on their expertise in this area. And so I just think we've gone far enough. I don't want to see this concept discarded. I want us to move ahead with it, but I think we may be ready to go in a different direction with how we proceed. So I know a lot of work has gone into this, but unfortunately, some of it doesn't seem to be coming to the kind of fruition that we need for our downtown. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
So I guess I'd ask my council colleagues now if we can come to a consensus on a direction to move forward with this. You know, I think something that's important for everyone to realize is that the DDA has required G8 to move forward a lot quicker on this historically than what's happened. I see, you know, here, there are delays, groundwater delays. Originally, I believe it was supposed to be presented to the Planning Commission in 2008, didn't occur until last year. So I'm a little concerned about the progress, as Councilman Coles has said, moving forward on this project. I'd like to say that we reject the G8's proposal outright currently with regards to use of the city parcel with the parking, and direct staff to continue working within a set timeframe to find parking alternative with the developer. If we give them 60 days or 90 days to come back and make that, this is either going to work or it's not going to work, and we can move at that point.
Councilwoman Aguilera?
A question for staff before I move forward. How long have we been working on this project? Because I think I was Planning Commissioner when this started.
Probably in high school.
Well, I was an early starter on the commission.
With the project or with this particular developer?
Well, this particular developer.
So the DDA was approved in 2008. They submitted their application in early 2009. We went to the Planning Commission in February of last year, 2013, and it's still pending.
So we're about six years into it?
Right.
I don't know, 90 days or more? I think if we've had six years to kind of get this thing worked out, and I think financing has always been an issue in the past. I know parking has been an issue. I would just reject the project. Let's bring someone else in, or let's see. You know, we've come so far in our downtown. When I drive by on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I see 35, 50 cars parked in that lot, you know, I feel proud because I've been part of that, and, you know, Vista's really growing. We've got some successful businesses. Our downtown is starting to be revitalized. I think at this point, I would feel more comfortable seeing some of the projects that the city and, well, the Affirmed Housing and the other housing project that's going in, letting those things develop, get them built. Tonight, we sold a few properties that are looking to develop in our downtown as well, potentially restaurants in our downtown. Some of these properties that we sold earlier are potential restaurants. Let's see what these businesses bring in and what the traffic and parking is going to be like in the next couple of years, and hopefully it's going to continue to get busier, but I think we'll have a better idea of what our downtown is going to look like, and I think we're jumping the gun here, and I think we might make a mistake if we move forward at this time.
I actually agree with Councilmember Aguilera.
I actually agree with Councilmember Aguilera. I, my thing is if we're going to build a parking structure on city land in the back there, I would build it for more parking rather than filling it up for the building that's going to be there. You know, I build it so that we have more parking for the downtown, and then whatever would develop on that parcel should park itself, to me, that's what, plus I wouldn't want to drive through town, I don't know that I want to see a parking structure, especially one that's done the cheapest possible, you know, you'd want something that maybe looked a little, you know, didn't look like that coming through town, so, plus it would block the mural, so, anyway, so I agree with Councilmember Aguilera, so I would make, do I make a motion? I'd make a motion to reject the proposal and terminate with DDA, with G8, and then let's see, let's see, let's look at the future and...
Alterate motion.
Is that an alternate motion?
Second.
Oh, okay. Alternate motion. Is that an alternate motion? Can I make an alternate motion? A substitute motion?
Substitute, yeah.
Substitute motion? Okay, now I have a second.
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, I thought you did.
Okay, Councilmember Coles has something to say.
No, I was just going to reiterate what...
Put your mic, your mic.
I was going to reiterate what has been said already, I think, you know, the city has skin in the game here, it's our property for this parking structure, and I want to make sure that it is something developed to a standard that we can all agree on and know before we just kind of sign a blank check for something we're not quite sure how it's going to be financed or how it's going to be paid for to be maintained, and I don't want that to fall back in our laps when we're not really generating additional parking for our downtown businesses. I want to see that as a part of any plan that comes forward. So I'm, on that note, I was seconding your motion.
Okay, okay, so then I guess if there's no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next thing on our agenda, it's another long one here, is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing, and this is the hearing on Santa Fe Vista Apartments, appeal of PC 14-299.
Do you have your notes?
Where are my notes? Hold on. So, the next item is to consider, is a public hearing to consider an appeal from the planning commission's approval of an application by Hausweiler and Associates for 96 multifamily apartment units at 1375 South Santa Fe to be known as the Santa Fe Vista Apartments. Does any member of the council have information to disclose at this time concerning a conflict of interest, ex parte contacts concerning this appeal, or any other disclosure that would affect your ability to render a fair and impartial decision? So I'll start with Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I've received a couple of emails and had conversations with Kenny Ulrich, I believe he lives on Mar Vista, his family lives on Mar Vista, we just talked about the traffic issues there on Mar Vista, he was concerned, excuse me, about the speeding mostly, which I don't think is going to really be affected by this project, but I also had email conversations with Windis, I can't remember her last name, Windis? And then also the developer has sent me, I think he sent an email to all of us with his concerns, so that was it.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
I'd like to disclose the ex parte contacts with the developer, I met with the developer, Affirmed Housing as well, with city staff, and I also attended their public meeting here at the Civic Center Community Room a couple of weeks ago, and I received information and comments from numerous community members, at which time I did not provide any information to those community members that would affect my ability to render a fair and impartial decision.
Councilmember Coles.
Yes, I did meet with representatives of the developer following some of the discussion when this last came before the council, and we requested some modifications and some other factors relating to issues that were brought to our attention at that meeting. Members of the development team met with me to describe some of the changes that they made in their, in their plan and their design, and discuss some aspects of the circulation issue. I also, after the last meeting, I spoke to several of the audience outside and listened to some of their input and concerns. I've also received emails from a number of people expressing their concerns as well. None of these, I think, would render me unable to make a fair and impartial decision tonight.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As my colleagues mentioned, I did, was contacted by Affirmed Housing, and I did meet with them along with city staff to go over some of the changes that were asked for after our last council meeting. In addition to that, I also have been contacted by several members of the community, both email, phone calls, and at the grocery store and other places around town, and invited them to come to the meeting tonight to see for themselves what the changes would be, and again, my conversations were not anything that would leave me unable to render a fair decision this evening.
And I, like the rest of my councilmembers, met with Affirmed to go over any kind of changes and things, I received emails from numerous community members and on their input and concerns, got one from the developer, and, but nothing has rendered me, rendered that I can't make a fair and impartial decision, so I'm with that, I'm going to open...
I have one more disclaimer, I don't think I officially said that I met with the developer, but I also attended those meetings and tried to express the concerns of the community, I think traffic was the biggest thing that we discussed, but also the design of the building, so.
Okay, so now we'll open the public hearing and we'll call for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. With me this evening is Greg Mayer, the city engineer. This is a continuation of the June 10th council meeting regarding this item, it's an appeal of the planning commission's decision from May of this year. Because we, I presented a fairly extensive staff report in June, I'm going to focus primarily on the changes to the project that are proposed since then. So the primary change is the reduction in units from 114 to 96 multifamily units, apartment units on this site at the southwest corner of South Santa Fe and Mar Vista Drive, would be a mix of one and two-bedroom units, all of the three-bedroom units that were in the original proposal have been removed. There would be a 2,459 square foot recreation building, which increases the recreation building size as well as the outdoor seating and use areas for the pool and spa. A proposed 193 onsite parking spaces, which exceeds the city's requirements and includes enclosed garages with a majority of units having direct access, as well as carports and open spaces. And lastly, there are no affordable units proposed, all of the affordable units were removed, and all of the proposed 96 units would be market rate apartments. The project site is at the southwest corner of Mar Vista and South Santa Fe, it's a vacant 4.58 acre site that's shown in the overhead, bounded by Mar Vista Drive and South Santa Fe, across the street from the intersection with Cypress and the North County Transit District rail line on the south side. The land use designation is mixed use, the zoning is mixed use, allowing a maximum density of 21 units per acre, and that's the area shown in purple. The revised site development plan is shown here, it still proposes seven three-story apartment buildings, as was originally proposed. There are some two-story components to those buildings, which are shown with a purple cross hash, so they have slightly reduced the massing on several of the buildings that front the public streets. There's a central recreation building and pool area that's shown in blue, some common recreation areas shown in green up by the street, which are small areas that were included in the original proposal, and gated entries which have been added at the access driveway. Each of the apartment buildings would have between 11 and 18 units, which is reduced from 13 to 21 units per building in the original proposal. The unit sizes for a one-bedroom, one-bath range between 700 to 720 square feet, there's 50 of those proposed. Two-bedroom, two-bath range from 904 to 965 square feet, there's 46 of those proposed. The project includes 70 garage spaces within the units, 26 carports, and 89 uncovered spaces, as well as eight loading, for a total of 193. The development code requires 167, so exceeds that requirement. The garage access has been modified, which I'll talk about in a later slide, and the parking areas for the most part remain unchanged, and the rear of the buildings fronting the streets. It shows the landscape plan as revised, and inlay is the pool area, main rec area with the primary entrance off of South Santa Fe. This slide shows the progression of architectural designs that have been proposed, the top being the planning commission design approved in May, the design presented to the council in June, and the revised architecture at the bottom, which is a Mediterranean, Santa Barbara style, as proposed by the architect. You know, the massing of the building on the right side there has been reduced to provide a two-story element. This is the four-sided architecture that's proposed as revised, as I mentioned, it's a Santa Barbara Mediterranean style, includes stucco, tile roofs, canvas awnings, wood trellises, iron railings, tile decorative accents, et cetera. This is the three-story building, which would be on the interior of the project, there's two buildings on the interior adjacent to the pool that would not have the two-story elements. The floor plans are shown here, the bottom floor is shown for the purpose of providing graphic, the upper floors have changed only slightly. The original proposal is shown at the top where all the garage units would be, enter and exit through the garage door. When we discussed this with the council in June, the council expressed concerns about security for people entering their garages and not having a way out, so the developer has redesigned the floor space to provide access to the majority of the units, all of the ground floor units would be accessible through the garages directly, and there would be interior hallways for a number of the other garages. In total, 40 of the 70 proposed garage units would have access either into a hallway or a unit, which is 57% of the garage spaces. With regard to the environmental review, the project's been reviewed under CEQA, the findings and final EIRs included in your packet, there are modifications to off-site traffic impacts identified in the final EIR as a result of improvements that are proposed at Mar Vista and Avocado, which I'll cover. The off-site improvements mitigate the traffic impact at Mar Vista and Avocado, but there's still remaining significant traffic impacts at Mar Vista and the 78 ramps, and those are covered in the findings and statement of overriding considerations. The impacts to biological and cultural resources would still be mitigated to less than significant levels, and the final EIR is attached to the staff report, which includes a revised traffic analysis. This slide shows a slight reduction in the traffic that would occur as a result of the reduction in units, the numbers that are, the revised numbers are shown in red, the former numbers have a strikeout through them that show what the original project would have generated. The percentages are the distribution of traffic for which the traffic report assumes the direction of traffic from the project would go. So the daily ADT or average daily traffic from the project is reduced from 684 to 576 under the revised proposal, and the distributions are shown on the slide, I'll be happy to revisit that if you have any specific questions. With respect to the access at Mar Vista, I'm sorry, with respect to the project driveway access at Cypress, there was considerable discussion regarding the limited turn movement coming from Cypress onto Santa Fe. The staff's looked at this issue with respect to the project driveway. We are still recommending a modified median as shown in this slide that would continue to prohibit turns from Cypress onto Santa Fe southbound, which was originally conditioned by the city to reduce cut-through traffic on Cypress. This would still allow all-way access out of the project driveway. With respect to Cypress Drive, there were a number of residents that spoke at the last meeting regarding traffic from the project and impact to their neighborhood. Based on the traffic study, the staff does not believe that the traffic from the project would significantly impact Cypress, although there would be some trips that could potentially go on that segment, it's anticipated to be less than 1% of the project traffic. However, the staff does recognize that the cut-through traffic that currently affects that segment between Santa Fe and Monavista Drive adversely affects the neighborhood, and so therefore we're recommending to allow for a process to consider a public road closure along this segment, which is outlined in the agenda report. With the city council's concurrence of this process, staff can initiate a conversation with the Cypress residents and return to the council with any formal policy amendments to ensure that closure. With respect to the intersection of Mar Vista and Avocado, the project had originally identified a significant impact at this intersection, which is stop-controlled. The project proponent and the city engineer have come up with a design for a roundabout or a traffic circle at this location, which is shown in the overhead, which would alleviate the traffic problem that's currently experienced as a result of the stop signs. Staff evaluated several alternatives to fix this problem, including signalization, removing the stops and allowing for a free left, as well as the roundabout, and we feel that the roundabout provides the safest condition while improving the flow of traffic through this area, and the analysis of the roundabout shows that the level of service for traffic at this intersection would improve from failing E or F in the future to level of service B, which the city considers to be an acceptable level. Finally, staff's recommendation has not changed, we are still recommending approval of the project with the modifications as recommended, and that concludes my staff report, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Does any member of the city council have questions of the staff prior to our public testimony? Anybody? No? Okay, seeing none. The first speaker, we, please, everyone except for the applicant, I would ask you to stick to your three minutes, because we have almost 30 speakers here. The first speaker will be the representative of Affirmed, and that's Lindsay Quackenbush? Or, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, council, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, assistant city clerk, and everybody in the audience. We're glad to be here. It was a tough meeting last time, and we certainly appreciate your fair consideration and the feedback you gave us, and giving us the opportunity to, through this continuance, come back and show what we can do as a developer. First, I want to just quickly introduce our development team that's here, just, they'll be answering questions, any detailed questions, and also keep the focus on, you know, it's about, we're hard-working people, trying to do our job well, and listen to the needs of the community and the city, and do a great job for you. So Chris Earl, we've had, you've had interaction with, he's a project manager, he's the nuts and bolts day-to-day guy, he teams up with our development consultant, Mike, and then Gene is our assistant project manager, he keeps all the chaos under control and helps us remember all the stuff we forget. Rob Strezza is representing GMP, the landscape architect, who's doing a great job on the landscape design, and then we have Sorapong and Jamie Stark with Stark Architecture, who have been the masters of recreating both the functionality and the look of the building, which I think we were directed to do, and I hope we did a good job. Last but not least is Tim Winslow, who is the property owner who teamed up with my boss, Jim, and Tim's been working on this for a decade, trying to get it developed, and we really believe that this represents the appropriate growth that you've been talking about in your city, it's a growing time, but you need to make sure that it's measured and thoughtful. The cool thing about Tim and Jim is that when we were redirected to do something different, they didn't look just at the bottom line, they said, "Let's get it right first, and we'll figure out the economics." So we do know that it's going to be challenging, we've dropped 15% in density, that's huge on a pro forma, but we're going to figure it out, because that allowed us to then recreate the architecture with some drop-down sections and take some of the massing out, and some of the other things, so the density was a first step. John, you know, wonderful department, you have one of the best-run cities in San Diego County, if not the whole state, and look out after your interests, and very creative people at helping us solve problems. Getting out a little out of order, I think the biggest problem that we solved that wasn't a project-related problem was the traffic issue at Avocado and Mar Vista. This gentleman back here, he's gone now, but he spoke earlier, at a prior planning commission meeting, he stood up and said, "Well, why do we always accept non-solutions as the best solution?" You know, it was about two walls right next to each other and a gap in the middle. In this case, it was a failing intersection where we could pay a fee and punt the problem down the road. Well, obviously, we heard from the community that we needed to do better, we did better. And I think the traffic circle, while it's going to be a little challenging for people to get used to, my thing is just visualize merging onto the freeway and just keep turning left for a little bit, and legally, you can go around and around as much as you need to, till you get off, but it, what it does is it keeps traffic flowing, and it's a really cool solution, no signals, no stoplights. No signals, no stoplights. We're glad that we were able to make it work within the right of way, so that it's a very doable condition to place on the project. So back to the staff report, I mean, John really laid out all the changes. So we completely redid the architecture. Do we have the, how do I skip to the? So this is the new architecture. We had it rendered, hopefully to really show it well. I think this connotes where contemporary architecture is, a lot of people interpret it differently, traditional Santa Barbara-style architecture has a connotation that I think is pretty consistent with what you see. And I think it will be just a phenomenal asset to have at this corner, and it's the right growth you need as you start bringing density into corridors, certain areas in the city, Santa Fe, this, or Santa Fe Road being one of them. One thing to mention, this is a $27 million investment in a community, and that's huge for communities. So I, we recognize that a lot of the concern is property values in the long term, and I think the best thing is to have appropriate growth, so you have a rebirth of Santa Fe, so it becomes this cooler corridor with more businesses, which makes the surrounding properties that much more desirable. And I think this is the start of that event, and while it's hard for some people to see now, that is what we are causing to happen. So I don't want to take too much more time, I just want to say that we heeded your advice, we listened well, we heard that we had brought a good project, a conforming project, although it was using a state mandate for additional density if you had affordable. But it was just a good project, and I think Councilman Aguilar, you said, "Take it from good to great," and we believe that's what we did. And it took our team, it took a lot of interaction with the community to make that happen. And it's a great project, it's 100 percent conforming, and we think it's worthy of an approval tonight. The only thing I'd ask is, after the public comment, if we could have an opportunity to address any issues that might be pertinent.
You can, you will. Okay, so we will start with our public comments here. Thomas, looks like, is it Brown, Thomas Brown, followed by Williams Gay, Jr.?
Good evening. I live in that area up there, and I drive Mar Vista a lot. I originally grew up on the East Coast, and I know, I still have a lot of family and friends back on the East Coast, living in Pennsylvania and New Jersey. Pennsylvania and New Jersey are starting to take away clovers, because they're causing accidents. This is what they tell me back there. Mar Vista is nowhere to put a clover over there. Right now, at rush hours, it's bumper-to-bumper as it is, and if, like the gentleman said, people just ride a circle around, you'll have nothing but a traffic jam, nobody going no place, and everything else. That's all I want to say, is just those few remarks, that Mar Vista is not a big street, and especially to get up to the freeway, you'll never make it. You'll never leave the house an hour early to get there and everything else. Like, the, up to the freeway, it's, it's a light, it's, right now, it's bad, as it is, period, let alone but all those cars and more up there. And then, then you're going to have people walking also, and there's no walkway up there at all. Have you ever been on there and seen a big 18-wheeler come down that road? He takes three-quarters of the road as it is, and everything else, and what are you going to do when you're bringing all this merchandise in there to build these houses? You're going to have all kinds of cement trucks and trucks coming down through there and everything. The public speaks. It's just going to be horrible, it's going to be a dead street, and it's going to wear and tear on it and everything. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. William Gay, followed by Renee Glatsball. Followed by Renee Glatsball.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I am, I was, I'm not within 500 feet of this project. I have so many issues with this project, you guys don't have time enough for me. I live off of Tower Drive, which is, intersects Phillips. Phillips ends at Civic Center Drive, and it also ends at Mar Vista. 99 percent of the time, I take Phillips down to Mar Vista and make a left turn to go to Santa Fe, South Santa Fe. That's hard to do at 10 o'clock in the morning, it's hard to do at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, it's hard to do at 2 o'clock. It's impossible to do between 5:00 and 7:00 in the morning, because there's so many cars. You're looking at having 96, 96 units, let's just say 100 units, and I'm going to say 1.5 cars for each of those units, that's 150 cars coming out of there. Okay, now, they're not coming out of there all at once, they're all going to have to go to work, I would think, because they're having to spend about $2,400 for an apartment. There's going to be two people, and people are going to have cars, right? The cars right now are backed up, like the gentleman said before me, they're backed up, there's 10 or 12 cars backed up to that, to Avocado and Mar Vista, almost daily. And then you have, where Phillips ends, it ends at a railroad track. You're looking at having cars backed up all the way past that railroad track, and you know why they call it rush hour? Because everybody's in a hurry, and people are going to start taking chances going over those tracks and pushing their way through. Okay? You put a bicycle, you put a bicycle path, you put a bicycle path there on South Santa Fe, and when people come to visit people at this place, they're going to park on the street, they're going to throw their doors open, they're going to run across the street, there's people jaywalking across the street now. And you're going to have 150 people going across to the Sunrise and over to get their gasoline and their beer, whatever they're going to get over there. Anyway, I'm thinking that these cars, when they get frustrated enough, they're going to be going up Phillips, through Tower, and down over back into Civic Center Drive, and that's going to ruin our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is going to be a thoroughfare for all these people that are in a hurry to get to work. Right now, it's very, it's cool, but you're going to have 150 cars getting frustrated, you're going to have 25 of those cars running through a big windy street going down to where, what's happening. I noticed in the thing here that you said, "An unavoidable traffic situation." Unavoidable, what does that mean? That it's not possible, that it's going to cause problems? Yeah. And also, you also said that you're cutting off, I don't understand clearly about, okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, it's fine.
Renee Glatsball? Where's Renee? Followed by Rick, it looks like Cronbush?
I've reached my letter.
Cronbush?
Mayor and city council members, and planning department and staff, our Vista taxpayers and our Vista Unified School District students and families say for the safety of all, say location, location. At T-Mood PC 14299, propose multifamily apartments proposed on South Santa Fe, far away from that location, and build them in a safe location, so that people can live, play, and learn in a safe environment. There are five sober livings in Vista. Okay, so county supervisor Dave Roberts also needs you to vote to build apartments in safe locations for his trustworthy foster families and voices for children to have safe living environments to live, play, and learn in our Vista 24/7. Not a safe environment, these apartments. There are six off-sale beer and wine licenses on South Santa Fe, AMPM, Vista Liquor, Walgreens, CVS, Flix, Vans. 99 DUIs in Vista from December 2013 to August 24, 2014. August 14th to August 24th, there were 16 crashes, no DUIs in Vista. From January through August 24, 2014, there were 384 crashes on I-78, 50 DUI drivers on I-78, 224 arrested on I-78, four fatalities, very sad, on I-78. Ambition statement, we believe in striving for ever greater heights, we believe in pushing boundaries, we believe that everyone has within them the right to be truly great. By generally caring for what's important to our listeners, our advisors, and communities we serve, please vote no on South Santa Fe apartments for safety for all. Thank you.
Rick Cronbush, followed by Brett Schatzenbach.
Mayor, council members, and staff, I'm here this evening to speak in support of planning case number 299. My name is Rick Cronbush, I live at 2069 Oakland Drive. I moved from out of state to Vista 25 years ago. The plan was to live here temporarily, looking for a permanent home. Well, we couldn't find anything better than compared to what Vista had to offer with the high cost of housing in the area. I believe every opportunity should be available for Vista to acquire new residents. This project will definitely attract new residents looking for high-quality rentals. I'm a general contractor specializing in residential construction. Since I live just on the south side of 78, I use Mar Vista very often. I'm always going to give lumber, El Camino rental, Sunrise Materials, AMPM. Mar Vista is a quaint little street that hasn't changed much over the years. The traffic has changed because of the growth around, around it. Even in peak hours, it may be bumper-to-bumper, but it's always moving. The traffic is very predictable, and I know when the slower times are, are going to be. And I think this roundabout will help the flow keep better. When I first heard about this project, I thought, "Oh, no, there goes my back road into Vista, or into South Santa Fe." Then I looked at the studies and spent some time going over the scenarios and looking into other multifamily projects and how they affect local traffic. As this new project rents out, we users of Mar Vista will have time to adapt to the slight increase in traffic. I would guess, however, that it's going to take two to four months to reach low vacancy, so there's going to be time to get used to the gradual increase. I think traffic studies are calculated for worst-case scenarios. Mar Vista is just one of three routes to 78 that are available for this project. Everyone knows that if a route's clogged, usually the driver will take the fastest route out of there. The Monarch at Shatteridge Apartments on Thibodeau is a 314-unit project, much larger than this project. Its occupancy runs about 95 percent. Rents are from $1,000 to $3,000 for one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. With this price point, most of the units are, have more than one vehicle associated with it. Traffic there enters and exits only on Thibodeau. I drive that street as much as Mar Vista. There is nearly no impact from traffic on that project onto Thibodeau. Look at any housing project, do you see a long line of vehicles waiting to come and go? I usually don't see them. I'm in, I'm for growth in Vista and urge support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brett Schatzenbach? Followed by George Purcell.
Good evening, council. Brett Schatzenbach from the Vista Chamber of Commerce. We are here to encourage you to adopt the staff's recommendation in favor of this project. The project, you're in a tough spot, there's no doubt that any project that is ever done on that corner will impact some traffic on Mar Vista, there's no, there's no way around it. The owner even shared last time when we were discussing this, that at one point, he was in discussions with a Walmart to possibly go, and I can only imagine the discussions we'd be having now if that were coming forward instead of some, you know, apartments. It's a quality development that meets the zoning that you and your leadership have put together for that property. To reject the project at this point would feel like, you know, I said this before, but it's like telling the owner, "It's okay to own that piece of dirt, as long as you never do anything but keep it dirt." And that's not fair to the property owner or the developer. They've listened to concerns, they've tried to make accommodations, I feel like they've done a respectable job at that. We're encouraging you to support the project tonight and let it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. George Purcell, followed by Chris Brenzel.
Yes, George Purcell, good evening. I've used Mar Vista for 48 years, and this project will be a big problem for the people around that area. And I think the project is a good fit if you don't live in that area. And I'll say the same. I won't waste any more of your time, I'd just like to say the same thing the first three speakers said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Brenzel, followed by Donna Harper.
Good evening, council. I haven't had a lot of time to prepare, I just came home from fires in Northern California, and I've only had two days that I've been aware of this project. And unfortunately, that hasn't given me enough time to go through the environmental impact and to read everything to become fully versed, but I do have some major concerns about this project. And I live three houses from the intersection of Mar Vista and Avocado at 1531. So basically, every morning and every night, I'm affected by that intersection, and I don't feel that this environmental impact report takes into account all of the residents who live on Avocado Street, who don't fall within the city boundaries. You know, I'm in the county, I'm not in the city, so I don't find out what's going on in the city, even though that project is 300 yards from my house. I feel that all of the residents on that street, along with Honaly, and all of the students that would go to Honaly, that family, they're going to have kids, they're going to go to school, they're all going to go down Avocado Drive, they're all going to turn on Honaly, and they're all going to come back to go to the freeway. So you're going to be impacting Avocado from another direction, and that wasn't looked at in the environmental impact report, they're simply looking at how, excuse me, how Mar Vista impacts Avocado and connects with Santa Fe, and not the residents along Avocado Drive. So I have a lot of concerns there. My other concerns is going to be the ability for public safety, for EMS and for fire, to make access into that area with that turnaround and with the increase in high-density populations. I appreciate, I appreciate the developer, I understand that people need to make a profit. I know it must be hard holding the piece of land and not being able to do anything with it, but I just don't feel that this is the right use. I think single-family dwellings or some other use of land would be better, better used. That's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Donna Harper, followed by Nancy Gosnell.
Hi, Mary, Mayor, City Councilman. It's been a long time since I've addressed you. I came to Vista in 1975 as a resident and brand-new teacher here in Vista Unified School District, and 40 years later, I'm still working for the school district. Safety is first in our school district, which it used to always be here in the community. I'm very concerned, I reside on Phillips Street, I've been there 12 years now, moving from my home off of Castle Gate. I'm concerned that the children, how are they getting to school? Busing has been eliminated by the Vista Unified School District, sidewalks are not safe, either to go to Honaly or to go to another school, Mona Vista, wherever they may go. Has it been considered the impact to the school district, which according to our board and our leadership, is we don't have the money in our school to provide transportation and other expenses, who's going to pay for it? The other thing is, I think it's an inappropriate location for children. You're next to a mortuary, and you're next to an AMPM, you also have the straightaway there on Santa Fe, where we have emergency vehicles going on, I know, because I can see them on the hill from my house. They go at high rates of speed, which is necessary to get to the people they're serving. What's going to happen when there's a child in the middle of the road at all hours of the day? Again, I take a left-hand turn out of Phillips Street onto Mar Vista in the mornings at 6:30 in the morning, between 6:30 and quarter to 7:00. It takes me seven to 12 minutes to get out of that stop sign in the morning, particularly when the railway's going through. If I don't make it before the railway, I'm waiting even longer, and the backup behind me is intolerable. In speaking with roundabouts, I am an East Coast transplant, and I can tell you from experience, Americans are idiots when it comes to a roundabout. Europeans, okay, Americans, no. And that's been my experience in traveling across this country, when roundabouts have been introduced, they don't work, and it's an increase in accidents. Again, please consider the safety for me. I've been for development in this community, I helped build the county library here, taking two decades to get it. I believe in what we're doing in downtown, but this is wrong for the community in this part of the neighborhood.
It's Nancy Gosnell, followed by Mary Lou Baird.
Good evening. Everybody's pretty much hit on what I have to say. I live on Phillips, we cannot get out onto Mar Vista, I appreciate the people on Cypress, I love the fact you guys have taken what they had to say, but Phillips needs some help, too. We're not, if this goes through and a roundabout keeps traffic moving... We're not, if this goes through and a roundabout keeps traffic moving, we're never going to get out onto Mar Vista, right or left. It's not going to happen. So... And the other thing I take issue with is I'm going to assume the black strips they put on the roads was to measure traffic and the little speaker they put on a pole was to measure noise by the city and the planning commission. However, that was done during school break during the summer. That doesn't tell you anything about the traffic in our area when school is in. And it doesn't tell you anything about the noise on the weekends from the boxing arena that's down there, from the AMPM market, or the freight train. You missed the freight train. You may have got the Sprinter, but you missed the freight train. Also, if this does go through, I can't get any answers as to whether or not Santa Fe and Mar Vista are going to be red-curved, so there's no parking there. The developer tells me that's a city problem. The city doesn't seem to want to address it. If you're going to do this, and I hope you're not, I hope everything's planned before you go ahead and you know what you're doing. The gentleman said 50% of the garages will have access to their homes. What about the 43%? I know that was a concern of yours, Mayor Ritter, with if there's single women living there getting into their apartments. There's still too many three stories. To the gentleman who lives on Oakland, I'm so glad he can plan when he wants to go down Mar Vista, because those of us who live there can't. We have to do it when our kids need to get to school or we get to work, not when we're going down to AMPM for gas or sunrise to eat. So I think that's it. And I really hope you don't approve this. I just, I can't even imagine it in our neighborhood. I'm sorry. I think they've tried, but I don't think it's there yet. If it's going to happen, there's still a lot more room for improvements and negotiations. And I hope it's not a done deal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou Baird, followed by Georgia Paschan.
I'm glad to be here and to talk to all of you tonight.
Talk right in your microphone right there.
Can you hear me out?
Yeah, you pull it down. Pull it down.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. When I was a child, I was very lucky to live in Delmar Terrace, which is the place between Delmar and Torrey Pines Park. And I had a horse, and I had some chickens. And we had a little garden, and I loved living there. It was so fun. And when I got married and had children of my own, I always wanted to recreate that joy that I had in that lovely neighborhood. And so we moved to Vista, and we live on Montgomery Drive. So we're not quite where all of this is going on. But it's just right around the corner from where I live. And I'm alarmed that my lovely country dwelling, I mean, I know things can't stay the same forever, but I live in the semi-rural area. And this is just going to change the whole attitude for... This beautiful building, by the way, and I'm like looking at it, but somewhere else, you know? Or maybe make, why couldn't it have been like an old folks' home? Or, well, I'm going to be there one day. Something, a retirement place or, you know, like my mother lived in Aegis in Escondido before she passed. And it was a lovely lower, it wasn't so high up. And anyway, I am happy to hear all this, the stuff that I heard about people that live on Mar Vista, which is a pain in the ass to get up and down. I was just there yesterday, and it was like noon. And it was all slow. And then at 5:00 at night, forget it, if you try to get out and go for dinner somewhere, it just takes forever. So... You've all heard the bad things. And I just want to say that I know you have hard decisions to make. And this is the first time I've ever been to a council meeting. So I under, you guys have a hard job. I wouldn't want to have it. But I hope you're listening, all these people, and you heard all the clapping for the concerns we all have. And my thing at the bottom was to make the changes, but within reason, please, and help reserve our semi-rural area of living. And it's the reason we all moved out here. It's my town.
Thank you. Georgia Paschan, followed by Wendy Paschan.
Hi, my name is Georgia Paschan. I live at 1324 Cypress Drive. Just a couple of questions. I don't know why, when there's ever a rendering, for example, here, this must have been taken about 3:00 in the morning when there's only two cars and there's no cars in the parking lot or on the street. And then those trees are about 100 years old. And I don't know where they're going to grow from, but it's just not accurate. We talked about solar panels being part of this development. I haven't heard anything about that. I would really be concerned if this traffic circle be done prior to any kind of construction started on this project. And then, of course, with the current mandates for water, where's that coming from? With concerns for the owner and the partners, I don't know why he should get special treatment. I know if I go for a construction permit and I don't have my ducks in a row, I don't get the permit. He bought the land, it was commercially zoned. He's owned it for 11 years. He rolled the dice. He wins, he doesn't win, he gets the profit, doesn't get the profit. I don't know why that's your concern. And it's certainly not our concern. We still have to live here. The building itself, it's very nice. It looks very nice. It's not blended in with the rest of the area that we're talking about. You've done a great job in downtown. You've done a great job with the apartments that you've already broke ground on there. But this comes out of nowhere, and it just doesn't make sense for that area. Thank you.
Wendy.
Hi, I'm Wendy Paschan, and for 31 years, I've lived on Cypress Drive. The city of Vista is poised for tremendous growth. We're seeing new small businesses revitalize our downtown area and provide an opportunity for us to become a more relevant community, the kind of community where young families and bigger creative business want to take root. I'm extremely concerned that short-sighted development will squander the opportunity to elevate the city of Vista into a more appealing place to live. The city needs focused vision on how and why they develop land. Are we developing this particular property as part of a strategic growth plan aimed at eradicating existing blight to improve our community and the welfare of its residents? Or is this a quick execution to monetize a lazy asset? The American Planning Association states that great urban and suburban planning centered around a downtown core attracts more business, retail, hospitality. Three-story affordable developments and intriguing loft concepts make perfect sense in the city center. However, as the corridors lead toward the gateways of the city, all developments should be reduced in height and density to blend with existing older commercial and residential neighborhoods. This is exactly the type of improvement we'd like to see for the quality of life for all of us that live in Vista. Current home sale indicators across the country are showing that living in larger open-space residential areas is leading to a new growth trend, particularly among the young, professional, educated urban farmers. Older cities similar to Vista have created a burst of vibrant regrowth by assisting independent entrepreneurs to relocate. Young families desire the arts, creative foods, safe and fun activities for their children. When only high-density rental complexes are built randomly or in clusters around the city, we become even more of a bedroom community, attracting one type of statistic. Without preserving a balance among the multiple demographic factors, we won't be able to support vibrant business growth. This is a diverse city with growing pains that have not adequately been planned for. Pop-up, high-profile, affordable housing that is independent of cohesively-planned city creates disorder in the community. If 300-plus apartments are added to one-half of a mile of this strictly single-family home community, it absolutely impacts and changes its character. This is one of the oldest and most-desired neighborhoods in Vista. We refuse to lose the charm that this neighborhood embodies to those that reside here. Let's develop kinship for geographical diversity that exists in this beautiful city instead of trying to just homogenize it. It's a big disservice to do to all of us that live here in this community. And I think that really, we could do this. We asked for something that was two-story, and we got close. I think we got close. And I'm supportive of what they did. They really did listen. But I don't think it's quite there. It doesn't look like Monarch. It's close, but I don't think the three-story really needs to be at the gateway of the city like this. Thank you.
Sharon Seymour, followed by John McCree.
I'd really like to thank all of you for listening to us, the neighbors who live in this area. Tonight, I'd like to talk about my major concern with approving this development, and that is that you're not really considering all of the other developments that are going to be in this same area. There's three upcoming developments on the same block. And if we were looking at all four projects tonight with a complete plan in place that improved the area and maintained the community character, I believe that we would be looking at a very different project. Without determining the best use of each of these parcels with the total impact on the residents with regards to water, power usages, increased traffic, street parking, and crime, then I believe that we're heading down a road that will result in degrading and not improving our area. I have lived on Cypress Drive for 40 years, and I myself am a real estate broker and developer. And I know that our neighborhood is a very desirable area. Buyers are seriously moving away from coastal areas to our neighborhood to get away from congestion and track housing. They want a little bit of land, and they want a place to grow a garden. When houses go up for sale in our area, there are multiple offers. What do you think will happen when 300-plus apartments within one block are built in the middle of our quaint family, single-family residence? I can tell you what will happen. Reduced desirability and devaluation of property values. We already have a lot of apartments. We have Post Away, and we have apartments up Civic Center. And that's right where apartments should be built downtown, where people can easily walk to the transit system and do their shopping. I appreciate the developers' efforts, and I believe that they did a good job concerning our concerns from the last meeting. I really appreciate that they reduced the density and eliminated the low-income housing. However, while they reduced the density from 114 to 96 units, that was not enough. I believe if they had truly considered our opinion, that they would have eliminated all of three-story buildings and then subsequently reduced the density because of that. I beg you to please consider the negative impact of the three-story buildings within this project and not approve any other additional apartment buildings in this area. At the last meeting, I gave a detailed information regarding the impact that this project will have on my street, Cypress Drive. And we have prepared a petition that we'll be submitting to you shortly, signed by all of the residents. And I really appreciate your consideration of closing Cypress. It will, I ask that you please approve it as it will really help to improve our safety of our street. Thank you.
John McCree, followed by Rick, I think it's Habicht.
Hi, I'm John McCree. I live on Cypress Drive. And I'm against the apartment project across the street from Cypress. When I look at it, it looks nice, but I really can't think of one good attribute that it gives the people around that area other than increased traffic and noise, longer waits at Mar Vista and Civic Center Drive, speeding along South Santa Fe. It's a 40-mile-an-hour speed limit. People are going 60 miles an hour down there all day long. There's probably not 10 minutes. Well, I would say not more than a minute that goes by you don't hear an ambulance, a police car, a fire truck. This is only going to add more noise and make it a less desirable area for the people that live there and for people that might move into there. It's dangerous. There's just too much traffic. It impacts the people on Mar Vista. I can't even imagine. I would just sell my house and move right away. It's a nightmare. I think the bottom line is you have to, as city council members and people representing the taxpayers, is you have to say to yourself, if I lived in this area... I mean, put yourself in our shoes. If you lived in our area, on my street, on Mar Vista, would you, would you want this there? I mean, would you really? I mean, can anybody? Nobody wants this. It's a bad idea. And in addition to this unit here, and again, the developer, the owner, they should be able to develop their property to something that makes sense. This doesn't make sense. It absolutely doesn't make sense. If you think it does, there's something wrong. You're not thinking clearly. It's just, you know, I live from Guahomi to Mar Vista and above, and I don't know. To me, I just don't see anything that looks good. And I'm afraid that this is going to make it look worse. I mean, with more traffic and noise? Is that going to make things better? I don't think so. So look around the room, listen to the people. You're representing us. Make a good decision, please.
Okay, Rick, followed by, it looks like Stephen Ray, is it Sweetdecker? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Rick Habicht, and I developed the 15-lot subdivision at Presley Place, which intersects the Avocado-Mar Vista four-way stop. The staff report mentioned something about the cyclicization of 78 and Mar Vista, the off-ramps. They mentioned, but they didn't say what needed to be done. Something needs to be done, especially with the increased traffic that this project will bring. The 18-wheelers that come down Mar Vista by mistake and trying to get around that roundabout, I think is going to be difficult because now they come up to Presley Place and try to turn around. Luckily, I still have one lot up there, and they do that. But I think it needs to be looked at that they're going to be able to make that roundabout on those 18-wheelers. The parking, I think, on Mar Vista and South Santa Fe wasn't addressed. But with apartments, you have parking on the street. It's going to, I don't think it's a good idea that they are allowed to park on the street on those two intersections. This will be the catalyst for the other vacant lots on South Santa Fe to build apartments if this is approved like it is. This is a commercial lot. It looks like a commercial lot. Something... Something that is more in line to a commercial business as opposed to high-density residential needs to be built.
Okay, so do I have Stephen Ray, is it Sweetdecker? Okay. Followed by Christina Genovese.
Thank you for hearing us this evening. I live on Mar Vista. My husband and I could not get out on Mar Vista tonight. We had to try and make a left-hand turn, almost got hit. We had to try and get out on Civic Center just to get here. We were 20 minutes late, just from Mar Vista. I mean, this is just, it doesn't make sense. It just doesn't. And every single resident here has something to lose. Don't want it happen. Thank you.
Okay, Christina, followed by Abby Schwertbetsker? Schwartzpecker? Sorry, I'm murdering his names. Go ahead.
I'm Christina. I live on Mar Vista. I'm here to speak out against the apartments. I think it's a very bad idea for multiple reasons. I attended the community meeting that the developers had for the residents with concerns and their changes. I believe that with the changes that were made, it just still was not good enough. I would first like to address the fact that the senior living complex idea was introduced at the last city council meeting. It wasn't something that was brought up multiple times, but I did hear a couple of residents say that that was a good and interesting idea to put at that lot. I agree. After hearing it a couple of times at the last city council meeting, I heard it as well quite a few times at the development meeting that was happening a couple of weeks ago. And the response was the same from the developers, the exact same to everyone, that no one has actually mentioned that idea. And I was a little shocked because I think most of the residents would be okay with that. It would handle the traffic situation that we're all really worried about. And it would handle the crime situation that a lot of us are concerned about as well. I would like to also address the roundabout issue. I was informed that there was another traffic study. Unfortunately, it was done after school had let out for the summer and around a holiday, a major holiday when most people take vacations. It was probably our two weeks out of the entire year that traffic is okay. And not good, but okay. Putting a roundabout in that spot makes people not actually stop. And what happens for those of us who live... And what happens for those of us who live on Mar Vista is everybody who stops gives us an actual moment to possibly turn out. If you have people consistently going around and consistently flowing from, you know, Avocado on to Mar Vista, none of the residents are going to be able to leave. We're not going to be able to, or we're going to have to go up two exits on side roads and battle the traffic that way just to get to a freeway. I can't actually imagine what's going to happen if this is passed. I'm going to be really disappointed, because I'm hoping that as a city council, you are supposed to represent the people. I really want you to take the time and look around and see how many of us are here, how many of us are concerned, how many of us are passionate about where we live, where we have lived, where we want to stay. And, you know, I just want you to represent us, do what we want as far as a community, for the people who actually live there, the people who have been living there. Vote for what we want, because that's the position that you're actually in. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I've been, live on Phillips Street, right behind the Arco Station on Mar Vista in South Santa Fe. And we are, we're the original owner of our house on Phillips. And when we moved in, we knew there was going to be a freight train going by, and now the Sprinter. And that's noisy enough. But getting out onto Mar Vista, first of all, there's no sidewalks there, there's no place to widen Mar Vista. I have seen many accidents where cars coming down Mar Vista have ended up in somebody's front yard, because they can't make the corner. I mean, they can't drive, because it's such a narrow street coming down. I have also seen many accidents on Mar Vista and South Santa Fe, where the light is, people do speed on South Santa Fe. And I've seen people get killed there. I mean, living right on Phillips, right behind the Arco Station, I can't help but hear the crashes and see the crashes, because people are speeding and trying to get out into that intersection. And I also agree with that roundabout up on, up on, what is that? Cypress? Avocado? I mean, that is a nightmare already, right there. And there still isn't sidewalks for people to walk up there. It's, I mean, I walk the dog, and I'm in the street. And I can see where there's going to be a lot of accidents if there's only one access into these apartments. And there, I promise you, there's going to be, somebody's going to get killed there, because that's how busy that street is. And it's going to take away my view. And I'm not in the position right now to get up and move. I just recently lost my husband. I'm a widow in my house. And I know I'm in a very safe area. I don't have to worry that somebody's going to be breaking into my house in the middle of the night. Thank you.
Rocco Velucy Jr., followed by Dan Milich.
Thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to start just to say that I was opposed to this. I put down I was opposed to this project, because I felt like my father would be opposed to this project. Personally, I'd like to change my position to no position on this. I'd just like to let the people know, I live above a construction site that's ongoing right now. The construction goes on at 6 o'clock in the morning, Saturdays, Sundays. I don't know if the council was aware of this. It took a year for me and our neighbors to call the council, leave messages, call the no-noise ordinance. They said that the contractor was exempt. I couldn't understand why. If I'm out there mowing at 6, I get the cops called on me, but a contractor can have a backhoe going at 6 o'clock in the morning. Personally, I'd like to see the city buy the property and plant a bunch of oak trees and leave it alone. If, thank you, if, if, don't want to have an open space, maybe a dog park would be nice. We don't have one. Everybody has to walk their parks, you know, go to the park to walk their dogs. I would just, I'd like the city council to assure the people that, I feel that this project is going to go ahead. I'd like to assure the people that there isn't going to be no construction at 6 o'clock in the morning for this project. And eventually, I'd like to see the city put together a master plan, just to let the people know just how many people you plan on bringing to Vista. There are six apartment complexes in the city of Vista, you know, in the planning ongoing right now. So I just would like to know just how many people, you know, are planning on coming here. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dan Milich, followed by Mary, is it Jabe?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and staff. My name is Dan Milich. I reside at 1875 Jardine Court, here in beautiful city of Vista. I've been a Vista resident since 2008, a North County, North San Diego County resident since 1989. I've got a prepared script here that I'm going to read from, because I believe it's important. But I first want to say this. It appears to me that the dilemma before council is a pretty big one. You went through this huge public effort here in the city of Vista, culminating in 2012 with the adoption of the land use designations for the city as part of the general plan update. It was a very public process. As a result of that process, this property was designated as mixed-use. What can happen in a mixed-use zone? Well, one of the things that can happen in a mixed-use designated property is high-density residential development at 21 units to the acre. The EIR that was done for the general plan update at the time was certified and approved, along with the general plan update in 2012. That's when it would have been a great time for the impassioned arguments that we're hearing here tonight from these good people, to make those arguments. But what we have is a situation where a developer and a property owner have relied upon actions that the city has taken. In other words, the designations that were put in place to guide development for this city, not only this property, but throughout the city of Vista. So here we have a designation of mixed-use that allows 21 units per acre. You have a development code that's consistent with that land use designation that also allows high-density residential of three stories, meeting all the development standards that it needs to meet. This project does all those things. So I'm glad that I'm not a council member in the city of Vista tonight, but what I would like to say is, your charge is to direct development for this city in an orderly fashion, to take care of everybody's needs as best you can. The needs for the city to grow, the concerns of nearby residents, how do you marry all that and get that done? You know, that's why you're sitting up there, because that's the hard job to do. What I'm here to say is, having said all that, I support this project. I believe it's consistent with the zoning code. It's definitely consistent with the land use element. It's a quality development, and I'm here to urge you to support it and support staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Jabe, followed by Jeff Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and the council members for letting us and letting me speak tonight. I encourage you to reject this proposal. I am deeply concerned and am in a state of panic, and for the sake of my neighbors also that join me with this panic, in the ensuing insanity of this building project, as well as for the addition, as one of my neighbors said, the addition of the three other apartment complexes that are being proposed across the street from this very unit, across the street on South Santa Fe. I beg you, we beg you, we beg you to listen and reconsider allowing this unit to be built. We're not against growth. We're against this kind of radical growth. Again, why can't a senior facility unit be put there? We're totally for that. Again, it was proposed originally for commercial zoning. That zoning has been changed, as other people have noted. The zoning has been changed. I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. We beg you not to listen exclusively to the big builders and to the money behind these units, but listen to the outcry of your constituents and the concerned citizens who actually live there and live here on this city corner, and who have voted you into office to protect the city and to, and look out for the welfare of its people, and to make wise decisions that will affect the whole city, but more specifically, those who actually live within this directly affected area. You all were elected to help make our city run more efficiently and become a better Vista, smoother traffic, better business. Again, it was commercially zoned at first. With this proposal, we and all the surrounding streets of Mar Vista, Phillips, Tower Drive, Avocado, Hanalee, Presley, Hawthorne, will become massively detrimentally affected by massive, massive traffic. The one of the first meetings that was out said roughly 683 vehicles from that corner, when it was originally 114 units, would be coming from Mar Vista, from that corner, up to Mar Vista daily. Massive traffic issues that none of you will have to observe daily or be a part of, on a daily basis, like those of us that live in this area. How many of you, how many of you live in this part of this city? How many of you live in our neighborhood? How many of you builders and developers live in our part of the neighborhood? You won't have to deal with this traffic. The traffic at Mar Vista, eastbound and westbound, will be looking to alternate routes. Those vehicles will come up, like I said last meeting, at Civic Center Drive and come up Phillips Street, which has no, no sidewalks. It is a terribly windy and curvy road, filled with children and children on scooters, bikes, and countless dog walkers, of which I am one. What happens, what happens to the accidents that start occurring more frequently? Whose blood, whose, whose blood, whose, whose hands, whose, I'm sorry, their blood will be on whose hands? What happens when we have between 1,000 and 2,000 more vehicles a day from all four projects coming up South Santa Fe and Mar Vista? What happens to that? It was, Mar Vista and Phillips was not analyzed in the TIA report. What happens when this complex, which was built 50 feet, more or less, from the railroad tracks, can't get enough people to live in that complex because of the noise? Or leave soon thereafter, realizing that the volume from the freight train and the other middle-of-the-night blowing, and the coaster, which starts as blowing at 4:00 a.m., and then incrementally every 25 minutes? What happens? Who will live there? What will it become? Some of you have said, well, no one, that's not a big deal. Some people love to live at railroad crossings. I doubt that. I doubt that.
I need you to wrap up.
Thank you. We beg you to reconsider and slow down and postpone this detrimental building project, which will affect thousands of us who live right here, as well for all of Vista citizens, which will become the home of non-stop apartment complexes up and down South Santa Fe. Won't that be attractive?
Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all of our concerns. This is all really about quality of life. It really is. Home sweet home. We all love to go home and be in our sanctuary, to relax. My wife and I moved to the area off of Phillips, in a little street nobody's mentioned, called Philmar Lane.
Sir, can you talk to us?
Yes, I'm sorry. Philmar Lane. It's a little street that goes off of Mar Vista, comes across to Phillips Street, avoiding that little area by the train tracks. Every day, more and more cars are coming up and over our street. Even though we have little rain diverters or speed bumps, it does not stop them. They use that as an opportunity to get air. So our main concern, my wife and I moved here from Washington State. We could have chosen anywhere 21 years ago to live, but we chose this area of Vista, because it's very rural, it was quiet, but now it's no longer that way. We have motorcycles, we have ambulances, we have trains. We've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on our home to make it a nice place to live. And now we're on the brink of, we've got to sell our house and move to a quieter neighborhood. So our main concern is that this doesn't pass. It's a nice where, you talked about an earlier thing you were voting on, you don't want to see a parking structure. Well, we're going to be looking at three-story, although they're nice, three stories in our face every day as we come home. We don't want to look at that. That's nice, that can go somewhere else, but not where we live. We live in a rural area. We want to keep it that way. Thank you so much.
Kelly Kelly? Kelly Kelly, followed by Michael, is it Puskimi?
Hi, I would like to thank you for hearing our concerns again. And, you know, I appreciate that the builder, you know, restructured and did all that, but you can dress up a pig, and it's still a pig, you know? You still have busy street, busy street, and a train. And then that train, we've got the Sprinter going by every 25 minutes. It starts at 4:15. Our neighbor at the bottom of the street, Sharon and Dee, she said she can't go back to sleep after 4:15 in the morning. The freight train comes by, we live up the hill, we have three, three pane windows, we still hear it. It wakes us up. Somebody said before that it has charm. Well, maybe I'm a party pooper, because I don't enjoy it. I don't like being woke up. So you think if somebody living right there, they're not going to like it. So what happens when, you know, they're asking fair, or the market rate for the apartments, and nobody rents it? What's going to happen then? At the previous council meeting, June 10th, somebody had mentioned that they wanted to put storage units there with nice facades and trees and beautify it. There's other options than this. And there's other places to build apartments, on Sycamore, at 920 Sycamore, there's a big open lot. There's another one up Sycamore, a big open lot. They have sidewalks and not windy streets, so there's other options. It is not safe. You know, my aunt, your neighbor, Sherry Harris, every time she comes over, she says, "I about got in an accident." So please, please, don't approve this. Thank you.
Michael, followed by Deborah West?
Good evening, city council. Good evening, Vista. Mr. Connolly, if you could, if you could point us to a different slide here. And before we do that, while we're looking at that slide, if all the residents here can attest to, while it looks nice here and pretty, it doesn't fit our community. And so I'd like to go back to the other slide that breaks down the housing demographics. It's coded yellow for single housing, single-family housing. I think we need to look at that a little bit more off, a little bit more, right there. See, and when I look at this, this is where we have a suitability issue with this proposal. It doesn't fit our community. It just doesn't fit. And I know, we, I mean, we're not going anywhere. We're here. We are here. We're a united community, and we're concerned about our community. And this proposal will damage our, our community. And it may not affect you guys, because you don't live here, but we live here, and we're not going to go away. We're going to fight this all the way, because apartments do not belong in this neighborhood, period. The other thing I'd like to mention is that this is not the only proposal that's being mentioned here. There's other developers watching and waiting to see what happens here. And we're talking about 100 units, you know, 200 to 300 people. I mean, you can go a quarter-mile in any direction, and you won't have 100 houses. I mean, it's, the density is too high. I mean, they came back with some revisions, what, they knocked off 12 units? I mean, we're talking a lot of people in a small area, surrounded by single-family homes. It doesn't fit. It doesn't fit the community. You know, I think back to what's happening in Poway. I mean, I encourage anyone to Google, go online. I mean, I encourage anyone to Google, go online and look at Preserve Poway and look what they've done. They have a very similar situation there and a precedent has been set, you know? So, I just encourage everyone to look at that and see what has happened because we are not going away. We are a united community and we're concerned about it. So, please, take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Deborah West, followed by Fernando Amarras.
I just want to say that I have not heard anything about this until just two days ago. I got a newsletter from somebody that was walking around our neighborhood handing them out to inform us about all this. But I've also realized that there's also plans being made to make the other apartment buildings right across the street and down, a little bit right past O'Reilly's Auto Parts area on that side of the street. How many more is that added to all on top of this already added to the traffic that's terrible as it is? And this roundabout thing, come on, give me a break. I can't believe anybody would come up with something like that. They don't live there, obviously. And does any of you live anywhere in Vista by chance? I'd like to, well, it makes you wonder, you know? And also because there's, there's just too much crime going on and things like that, so many dating people, so many cars, there's no other park, addressing the parking issue as far as visitors. What are visitors going to do to try and visit their friends? They're going to park on the street, they're going to park in anything they can find. In the businesses' parking lots, yeah, no problem. They'll park there to get to their friend's house across the street. They're going to take up all the businesses' parking lots. And you've got so many in one concentrated area, it's not going to do anybody any good but go downhill. And they need some, a different, definitely a different design. And that's all I got to say. Just don't do it. Can I say one more thing? And this idea of a dollar a year and then paying for all this money for a parking, hello? We're supposed to be making some money. 99 years for this lease thing or something?
We didn't approve it.
Good, thank God. I'm saying, don't do that one either. That was lame.
Fernando, followed by Sarah, followed by Sarah Buscini.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Vista. I live on 1537 Phillips Street, right behind AMPM. I am opposed to this apartment complex. First reason, safety. Going to work in the morning, leaving my street, making a left towards the freeway, it takes me almost 10 minutes to leave my street. Two years ago, I got in a car accident with my friend trying to go to school. The car hit his side of the vehicle. I'm lucky he's still with me. I don't want that to happen to anybody else. My biggest thing is safety. On top of that, traffic, you're adding almost 300 cars? That's just insane. On top of that, okay, say somebody goes to Sycamore or goes to the next freeway exit. Those two are still clogged up. It's just going to make everything worse. You guys got voted to represent us. Don't get blinded by money. We're the ones that have to deal with all this traffic every day. Yes, you guys will, you guys will be making a pretty penny, but don't get blinded by it. We're the ones that have to suffer through all this. It doesn't belong there. Yes, it's nice and pretty, but do it somewhere else.
Sarah, followed by Charlene Wright.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for hearing us last time and again. I know that a lot of people in the neighborhood still don't know about this, and with a little bit more organization, I think we could 24-fold come out with even more arguments against this. Might be water under the bridge, but I don't think there should even be residential there at all. And knowing that it was bought originally commercial, I don't think that's completely unfair to tell the builder. And the reason is, and the design is beautiful, but if you know that street, it doesn't fit. And, I don't know, have you ever gone on Realtor.com and seen a beautiful picture of a house and then driven over to it and went, ooh, you know? Or dating site, whatever, pictures are deceiving. And it's next to an AMPM gas station, a mortuary, a train, and a commercial street that's an older commercial street. It's not a pretty street. I mean, the neighborhood around it's beautiful, but that's not a street you, you want to raise a family on right there. And a huge, underrepresented, underrepresented voice, I believe, here tonight has been the impact on, that's going to be on the schools. The schools are already over-impacted and under-budgeted, and I just hate to see what's going to happen if we just keep funneling more kids and we're not putting, I don't see us putting money into the education. I saw schools close, other schools suffer from that. And I, I'm not the right voice for that because I don't have all the facts, but I just, as a mom, that's a huge thing, and I'm surprised I haven't heard more about that tonight. And I think it's because people don't know, those moms at those schools don't know. There's something else, and I can't think of it. Anyways, I just really don't feel even, I appreciate the fact that they tried to make changes, and I'm not even going to say it needs to be less, I just don't think it should be anything but commercial. And that doesn't mean you can't develop it. We could use some great restaurants, we could use some commercial businesses.
Hello, good evening. Mayor, council members and staff. I would seriously like you to reject this proposal, and I'm thinking about it as the density, the density that this is going to cause, added to the other apartment complexes that are proposed along that area. When you find out that this roundabout and the road from Mar Vista from the freeway down to Santa Fe is a little country windy road, the roundabout is not going to work, the density is already committed, you can't redo, you can't take away the density once it's there. You're going to have to start and enforce public domain or eminent domain, and it's going to cost the city a lot of money to take away some houses to make the road usable. So, that's something the city maybe should consider too, is some expenses of adding this dense population apartment complex to the roads that need to get to it.
Okay, so that completes our public testimony. So, now we get to, the applicant is welcome to come up again and...
Can we take a brief five-minute recess before they speak?
Okay. Brief five-minute recess, okay?
Okay, if everybody will quiet down, we'll start our meeting again. Okay. Hello up there, everybody. We gotta, we gotta keep going. It's gonna be past our bedtime. Okay. So, right now, we're at the rebuttal testimony of Affirmed Housing. If they would like to up and speak.
I would. Okay, so we'll, as always taught, you start with something good, you deal with the controversy, and you finish with something good. So, the thing I'll start with is thank you for all the compliments. We really do appreciate being appreciated. We gave it a good shot. We think we did a great job. We will have to agree to disagree on what the outcome was, but it is good to hear that it was noted that we made significant adjustments. And we think we did hear what we were tasked to do, which is take it from good to great. And we're here for your vote of approval. Now, I think the biggest challenge, it was mentioned about, okay, this is, part of your job is listening to your constituency, and part of your job also is managing the city. And you manage the city through your departments, through a general plan process, through an enforcement of property rights process. And this is a property rights issue. We have a completely conforming project, which was brought forward to you, and you were asked us to go back and make adjustments. We made some, on our side, some major adjustments, and we're coming back again with a completely conforming project. You know, yes, does it tie into bigger issues? That is a challenge, but I believe that we have the same rights that the community has with respect to their property.
Oh, stop. Can please be respectful?
Yeah, I'd appreciate some respect. Thank you. You know, part of your challenge also is separating facts, which we know, you know, our Sam Cab can talk about how traffic circles perform and what they really do versus the emotion of people saying, in a very unqualified manner, that it's not gonna work. So, you probably deal with that all the time, and that's definitely a challenge. You know, architecture, poor Jamie, he gets beat up no matter what he does. He's probably used to this. Nobody's ever happy with the architecture until it's built, and it looks wonderful, and then everybody's happy with it. And yes, we do a rendering that shows the future, but it's gonna grow up. Everybody's wonderful homes now started off with little skinny trees in the front yard, and they grew up to be big trees. So, we have to, we have to think long-term, and that came up too. Is there short-term thinking going on, or is it long-term strategic planning? And I believe that's what you guys are implementing. Wanted to just touch base on the commercial, just to reiterate, four to five times the traffic. I think we've been through that issue before. That isn't the solution. Schools, we have checked with the school districts. They are anticipating the growth that the city has planned. So, again, that, we believe, is an issue that we've already vetted. Community character. Standing on the street now, what is the community character of Santa Fe right there? It's a slowly deteriorating commercial core that the city has a vision of reinvigorating with some density, some mixed use, that will then have spendable discretionary income there to help rebuild the commercial corridor. And that's what's gonna increase property value, not keeping it the way it is, because I don't think that's what we're talking about, is that character. Just wanted to mention, Affirmed Housing, our history has been with affordable housing. We've been partnering with cities like yours for 20 years. We encounter this more often than not, where people aren't excited about what we're proposing for the community, but not once in Affirmed's history has the community been disappointed once the project's completed. We build quality project, product, we manage it well, it's an asset to the community, and it's an investment in the community. In this case, we're proposing a $27 million investment in this community. And I think that needs to be considered about who we are and what our motivation is to be here in front of you. So, with that, I'll finish on, the one thing that I really do agree with everybody on is you guys have a really tough job. It's a lot of mixed issues, and we just ask that somehow you think through all the issues, think through the facts, and separate them from the emotion, and we ask for your vote of approval. And we're here to answer any specific questions. We have our, you know, expert professional team here to address anything.
Thank you. Okay, council. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of questions, and I don't know if it's for Affirmed or if it's for staff. I'm sure you guys will grab it if it's yours. Somebody had mentioned, one of the speakers had mentioned, that there are already 18-wheelers driving from the freeway onto Mar Vista. My understanding is that that is illegal. Can you clarify that point for me?
That is illegal. What's not prevented, I guess, is that when semis exit the freeway at that location, that they make a choice to turn around and go to the next exit. They do come down Mar Vista and get into trouble, or try to make a turnaround. Because it's so narrow, there isn't a really good place to turn around. I think we heard one gentleman say they use a portion of his driveway or his vacant lot to turn around, but it is prohibited. I can't remember the weight limit, but for specific reasons, large vehicular tractor-trailer traffic is prohibited currently, and it's signed that way.
Oh, I was just going to ask about the signage. Where is the signage?
I believe it's right when you get off the freeway, warning people as soon as possible, but I'd have to go out and look if it's further down the hill, but...
Is there a way to cite those people who are driving on that road illegally?
Definitely.
Okay. The other question I have that was brought up by a speaker was regarding construction early in the morning, and this might come to your, to Affirmed. That would bother me if it were a weekend, or any day of the week at 6:00 in the morning, to be quite frank. My understanding is that that's not going to happen, and if it does, what would be the community's remedy? May, can I bring him back up to the podium to answer? Please, thank you.
I can provide some clarification on what the rules are, which is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is what our ordinance allows for construction activities.
And not on the weekends?
Probably Monday, Friday.
For grading, it is 7:00 to 5:00. For construction or building activities, it's 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., although I don't know a contractor that stays working past, you know, late afternoon, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock is typically the cutoff.
And what about on weekends?
On weekends, it is allowed on Saturday from 7:00, I believe it's 8:00 to 7:00 or 8:00 to 6:00, and on Sundays, it's prohibited.
Okay. So, if that were to be happening outside of what our ordinance already allows, there would be remedy to deal with that?
Yeah, there would be a phone call from the city or from some authority person to probably our VP of Construction, and it would be stopped immediately. I mean, we're in the business of complying with regulations. We're also in the business of dealing with contractors who start their engines early or do things like that, and you have to stay on them. That's what Mike Espino does, is be, be in construction.
Thank you. The other issue that was brought up were about the solar panels, that I know that at the last council meeting, it was discussed about solar panels on there, and that wasn't addressed. Did anybody want to talk about the disposition of the discussion on solar panels?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor. Our intention is to put solar panels right now on top of the recreation building, the clubhouse in the middle, and maybe on the carports. We're also looking into making sure that we source non-glare variety so that there's no disturbance to the neighbors around us. But it's gonna be to a minimal effort, not like our typical community where all the rooftops would be covered. It's a different program for us, being market rate.
Okay, thank you. And I did hear a couple of people comment on the high density of the project, and I wanted to make sure, and some people also called it an affordable housing or affordable complex, and I want to make sure that it was understood by all the speakers as it was discussed in the staff report and with the initial opening remarks of the developer. This is not an affordable housing project. This is a market rate project. And the density that they've done is what is allowed under ordinance. And going for the density bonus that I had commented on at our last council meeting, where if they had added in affordable housing units, they were triggered for a state-allowed density bonus, they've walked away from that. They've taken the affordable units out, and they've walked away from their density bonus. So, this is a completely market rate project or development with no high-density trigger in there, just with the 94 units that they have instead, or the 96 instead of the 114. So, I just wanted to make sure, because some people were going back and forth on that, and I wasn't sure that everybody heard that part of the presentation. And as far as a traffic circle, just my own experience in traffic circles, and having had a little bit of a fear in them, we don't have a lot of them out here in Southern California, having experienced them back east in some other communities in San Diego County who've put them in, there are two communities in particular in Encinitas that put them in, and they actually made things go a lot more smoothly, that you can get in and out of those small communities a little bit more easily. That was my personal experience on those roads in Encinitas. So, I want to say thank you to everybody who came out here tonight. I know a lot of people have left, but I want to say thank you to all of you for coming out here and sharing your thoughts on this project, on this development, and your phone calls and your emails for those who are not able to be here tonight. And I want to say thank you to Affirmed and staff. As it was mentioned, everything that, this is conforming to regulation and to the general plan. There was nothing done specifically different on this project that wouldn't have been for another project with the changes that previous council had made on the general plan. So, there wasn't a special dispensation, so to speak. It does conform with the general plan. And at the council meeting in June, that we had all of the designs and the concerns that the public brought up and the council colleagues brought up, they addressed those. And I appreciate that you were open to that and listening to what we had to say, and some of the concerns that I myself had with some of the design with it, and particularly with the entrance into the units from the garages. I really appreciated that you did that. I understand you couldn't get all of the units, but all of the ground floor units are going straight into the unit, and I do appreciate that. So, you did try to listen to the community, you listened to the council, and you were very amenable to doing that, and I want to say thank you, and thank you to staff for doing that. I don't have anything else. Okay. Anybody? Councilmember Campbell?
Couple of questions for staff, just for clarification that a few members of the audience brought up. If you could walk me through the changes that were made to the zoning in this area, not just for this particular site, but the change in the general plan along South Santa Fe, and just kind of walk through the historical process for us to get to this point.
Sure. The process was started in 2007, was completed in 2012. As part of that process, we had a number of community meetings, looking at both vision, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities throughout the city, and where land use changes might be considered in an effort to try to revitalize certain areas. So, there were a number of commercial corridors that included some rezoning proposals in an effort to try to bring some new development into those areas. South Santa Fe was one of those areas. We worked with a number of the property owners within that corridor. We notified properties within 500 feet of all the land use change properties. As part of that process, in 2012, we held community meetings specifically for the land use change areas, South Santa Fe being one of them. And at the completion of that, we held a workshop at the council to discuss the potential to change the designation down in this area. The landowner at that time was requesting mixed use at a higher density, and the council agreed to mixed use, but at the 21 units per acre.
So, essentially, you know, we heard a lot of public comment about that this was commercial before, we should have the developer go back to commercial. But, once the zoning change was made by the prior council to make this a mixed-use development at a 21-unit-per-acre allotment, basically that entitles the landowner to that right to develop a project that would be conforming at that density. Is that a fair assumption?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, this is a difficult scenario, when you have a significant number of community members that, very understandably, are emotionally driven to be opposed to a project. And as a council member, it's very difficult to separate the emotional aspect and the factual basis aspect of being an impartial interpreter of the facts in this case. The project, according to staff, and the facts that are presented in the staff report and the many hundreds of pages of documents, this project conforms with our development code, it conforms with the zoning, and they conform with all the requirements put forth that our codes and ordinances require. So, the developer, in my mind, has met the requirements that the council, or city councils have passed, and the city staff have put on them to meet. Now, even if personally, whether I dislike the project or like the project, is not what I can vote on. I have to vote on what are the facts presented. If evidence was presented, or facts were presented to me here tonight, that said Item C of Page 231, that isn't met because of a specific reason, that brings in issues that we could look at and discuss, in my opinion. But, the developer has gone farther in terms of the changes to the project than they were required to do under the code. You know, they heard what the community had to say, they heard what we as the council had to say. I attended their public meeting, where there were about 45 or 50 people who came up and spoke individually to the developers. And they've made changes, significant improvements to the project. Now, that doesn't mean, and I'm not saying, that to the residents around that project, that you're gonna be 100% happy with the project. We heard such a wide range tonight from, "Don't build anything there," to "Build a senior complex," to "Build single-family homes." But, the question here before the council tonight is not any of those projects. It's the project that was already approved by the Planning Commission. It was brought to the council for review, and I believe that we have a responsibility, not only to the surrounding residents of this project, but to the city, to make sure that we don't deny a developer his legally entitled rights to development on this project, and potentially be subject to a lawsuit, losing millions of dollars, of tax dollars that, quite frankly, we don't have to lose in the city. Our general fund budget isn't there. So, it's a very difficult choice to make, and it's something that I want the community to know, that none of us here take lightly, one way or the other, that we're very committed to doing this the right way. One other question for staff regarding the roundabout. If you could give us a little bit more information about that change in the traffic patterns and the other alternative. Some of the comments that we heard were, "The traffic, the roundabout was not an option, there's another way to do it." Maybe if you could tell us what other options were looked at.
So, following the June 10th meeting, we looked at a number of scenarios in an effort to try to address the traffic problem at that intersection. Those included removing the stop signs and just allowing a free movement from Mar Vista to Mar Vista, maintaining this, which we believe is a very dangerous situation, so we don't support that. Maintaining the stop signs, which is an option the council may consider. We feel that it doesn't provide the operational benefits that the roundabout does, because it wouldn't move traffic through that intersection as efficiently as the roundabout, so that's why we're recommending that. The other option that was considered was a traffic signal, which would control the traffic at that location sufficiently and most likely mitigate the impact, but it would require the acquisition of additional right-of-way in order to make it work, and we don't feel that, based on the location of that intersection, that a signal is really appropriate for that neighborhood. So, that's the basis for the staff recommendation for a roundabout at that location.
And based on the traffic studies that you presented to us, it would change from a current EF grade of traffic to a B. a current EF grade of traffic to a B grade once the project is complete with the roundabout?
That's correct. It would be a level of service A in the existing condition and in the future build-out condition, it would be a level of service B.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Thank you. And I appreciate the feedback from the residents who feel that they will be impacted by this project. And I think Councilmember Campbell has taken us through some of the steps that we have to take into account, sitting here in our official capacity. Because we do have a fiduciary responsibility to the city and to the taxpayers here. And this really comes down to an issue of property rights. I think all of you have your property and you have the right to develop or to create your yards as you see fit, provided it fits within the code of the city. Even if your neighbor doesn't like it, you might be allowed to put a bird's nest in or a bird stand in. And if your neighbor doesn't like it, if the city doesn't prohibit it, you have the right to do that. On a larger scale, that's kind of what we're dealing with here. We have a property owner who does have rights to develop their property, and they went through a process to make sure that they were complying with city ordinance, zoning, and codes, and have worked over the past several years with give and take with city planning to make sure that they were doing things correctly. They brought a plan to us in the past. Many of us were not happy with that plan here on the council when they met to show us that. And we made suggestions that was brought into the public session here and neighbors made comments about it. The council, for the most part, supported the comments that came from the folks who attended the meeting. And we sent a message to the developer, please, you know, make some changes. While they certainly had no obligation or requirement to do so, they made some rather significant changes and are back with us tonight to show us those changes. I understand that it's an emotional issue for many of you, most of you. And it, the one thing that kind of bothered me a little bit was that nobody, I mean, everybody talked about all the problems that currently exist. And I don't discount those. I mean, traffic on Mar Vista at times can be cumbersome, can be impossible, can be a problem. This, whether this is there or not, that issue is not going to be lessened. I've come to rely on scientific studies of engineering, people who spend their lives and their studies to look at traffic patterns, and they have indicated in their report that the plan for that intersection is going to actually improve the flow of traffic. And I have to rely on something that's scientifically provided and based on fact as opposed to a feeling. And so I think, I think most of you have said, this project is probably going to go through anyway. And I think that's probably the case that we're dealing with here tonight. Thank you for coming. I don't, I can't hear what you're saying.
Just wait till we clear the noise. Sir, the discussions right now is among the council, so, sorry. Okay, so go ahead, Dave. Do you know where you were?
I just, I was trying to give feedback as to what I feel my responsibility here as a council member tonight, not as to how I feel for the condition that you feel that this will bring to your community. And we'll just have to wait to see to the extent that that happens. They've met all the requirements of mitigation that assure that the smooth flow of commerce in Vista will remain. So that's sort of what I'm having to deal with here.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for staff, and I think it's probably his question too. But why, why is this mixed use? I mean, I know I've been part of this, I just want to kind of go through this. And why hasn't this corner been developed in the past? It's been there, I've been here all my life and it's been the way it is forever.
The latter part of your question is probably best answered by the property owner. The reason it's zoned mixed use is because of the update of the general plan. We looked at, like I said, a lot of commercial corridors, this was one of them. Evidence points to the fact that many of the commercial uses along that corridor are underperforming and there needs to be some revitalization within the corridor. It's all been zoned commercial retail for a long, long time and that's not happening. So the interest was to provide some more flexibility in the types of uses that could occur down in that corridor in an effort to try to bring some development into that area and revitalize the area. The staff perspective is that some housing along that commercial corridor will support those businesses. It will result in an ultimate improvement to the corridor. That was the reason that we based our recommendation for mixed use.
Okay. So developer's shaking his head, yeah, or nodding his head, I guess. Nodding. Well, I guess the, you know, I've lived here all my life in Vista. I've had family here since the 30s, so I've seen a lot of changes in Vista from just a few thousand people to now 95,000 people. And when I first was elected, or first ran for city council, I think one of the biggest concerns or things that I wanted to be able to bring back to Vista was what I grew up in. But after I was more involved with planning commission and finally getting elected to city council, I realized that we probably aren't going to be able to go back to a town of 15,000, 25,000. This is not realistic. So, you know, I've taken a different approach in trying to control what happens. And I don't mean by controlling growth, I just mean controlling the aesthetics, the things we can control, hoping to improve the city, the demographics. I think this project will, will improve our demographics in that area. I mean, there's nothing there right now on that corner. I think what's important to note about the last couple of months is that we have been working the democratic system here. I've been contacted by several people in the community and run into people in the community. There's several, there is many people actually, and a few business owners in the area that are not here this evening that are in great support of this project. A restaurant that is right across the way that's very supportive of this project. But these are, these are the things that we listen to, we listen to both sides. And the great part about all of this is that I think some of your, some of your needs and your concerns were met. I go back about the, on this project and I asked the city manager just to confirm. And, you know, this project has been, has been approved by the planning commission already a couple of times. It was appealed, so that brings it to us, to listen to you. The project fits into the zoning, so there's not a lot of wiggle room here. And, you know, one of the questions I have for city managers, what happens if we don't approve it? If we didn't listen to everybody, you know, do what we want to do? I think we could be in a whole different situation and it may not be very positive for the city. I'm not looking to go down that road. Let's talk about some of the good things that have come out of this. Cypress was here, represented, they wanted to be heard. We listened to them, we heard them. They're going to have their day in front of city council, so I congratulate you on Mar Vista and the Avocado intersection has always been the way it is and only has gotten worse, I guess, as we've grown from 25,000 to 95,000. I've always wanted to figure out a way to improve that intersection. I'm not in favor of stoplights. I think we have enough in the city. The stop signs are already there. They're not, I mean, they're helpful, but they're not a solve for that. And to really solve the issue on Mar Vista and to solve all of your concerns is, at this time for the city, unrealistic unfortunately. And I think a lot of the property owners that have been there for many years would be very unhappy with the solution to the traffic. And I'm not in favor of taking anybody's property, whether they want to sell it or not, I'm not in favor of that. So I want to keep the street as close to possible the way it is. And I think the traffic circle, from what our engineering staff has told us, would improve the situation. I was blown away and questioned more than once, how are we going from F to B? I mean, that's a huge improvement. I even heard the A, now I understand where the A comes from if we didn't build the project. If we just put a traffic circle, we'd go from F to A because there'd be no bottleneck there. So I think that's another positive that's come from this as well. When it came to council, the mayor and I and other council members met with the property owners. And, you know, I feel bad for the architect. I'm one of the guys you can, you know, throw darts at at home. We really didn't like the looks of the project. It certainly did not fit in. It was a nice-looking project. Like I said, it was a good-looking project, but it wasn't great. And I think, I appreciate the hard work that has gone in and the staff has put into this because this is hard on staff as well. But they came back and they made the changes we asked for. I am very excited about the fact that we've reduced the number of units. I know it's not as much as most of you would like to see, but again, this is part of the give and take of our system. You know, we, we asked them to give when technically they probably didn't have to, but they did. And to me, that shows a good faith on their part. They've been a good partner with our other project, so I have no doubts that they're going to follow through with the things that they've promised. So with that, excuse me, sick, sorry. I think this project has gone from good to great. I know it's not perfect. I didn't say it was perfect, but it is a great project. And I think you've done everything you've asked, or we've asked you to do, so I appreciate that.
I see. Councilmember Rigby, I'll sit down again, but before, I'll take a turn, being, we're coming down the line here, but, and I hear you guys. I, I, I know, because I drive that all the time, I've lived in Vista a lot of years, I used to live over in that area, and so I understand. But I, but also, it's also a property rights thing. And so, you know, when I look at it as a realtor, I think, okay, single-family homes, is anybody going to really build single-family homes there? They're not. A senior, a senior facility, you have to be, for senior facilities, you have to be near transportation hubs and so they could, you know, take the Sprinter and things. It's not near any transportation. It would not be a good place for a senior place, so, because they would have no way of getting, getting places. So, you know, and a commercial, you want to put a commercial center there that has maybe a Starbucks and McDonald's or a grocery store, you know, you're thinking that's going to be less traffic? It's not. That would be, that would be just as much traffic. And even if the people from the freeway into a Starbucks was there, there'd be more traffic coming that way. So, and I also, I look at it all and then I think about the traffic circle, and I don't know, I suppose you could leave the stop sign there and see what, how, you know, how bad it gets or whatever and then do the circle. But I think, because I do worry about like Hawthorne and, you know, Phillips, how they're going to get out if the traffic just continues to flow. I, that's one of my concerns, so. But I agree with all of my council members that, that are, you know, saying, you know, all the things that they've said, they're, everybody's pretty, pretty smart up here and pretty, and they're tuned in, they listened to all of, you know, your comments. And also, we listen to, you know, what your changes that you wanted and the firm was willing to make changes. And so that, that's, that's important, I think, that they, that they were willing to do that when they didn't have to. One of my other concerns is also the, the single garages that don't have access to the units. And so I worry that those are going to become like a storage unit, you know, so I'd actually rather see them give a double car garage to somebody or something else, but on that. But anyway, so I'm, I'll go to council member, I got two here, council member Rigby and council member Coles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask on behalf of Wendy's Abosian, she had asked when the traffic circle would be going in. Would that be after the project, before, during? Do we have an idea yet?
The condition is currently written that the developers are required to install it prior to occupancy of their project, but the council may choose to modify that if they'd like.
Okay, thank you. And then also, as, as the deputy mayor said, in talking about this and bringing it up here from the planning commission, we have had the opportunity to hear from, from the residents on Mar Vista, Phillips Tower, Montgomery, as well as Cypress. And the fact that we will, we are, the city is committed, the city council is committed, and I can speak for myself, that I'm committed to working with the residents on Mar Vista and on Cypress with your traffic issues. And I know that you have a meeting scheduled and that you'll be talking about doing things on Cypress with your residents. And we'll be continuing to monitor what's going on on Mar Vista. So that's from me to you, is my commitment is that we're still monitoring this, we'll still be watching it. And I just want to let you know. And then somebody had commented that they were afraid that their housing price, their value would be going down because of this project. I am, I am envisioning that going the other direction. I am envisioning revitalizing that corridor that is a little bit dilapidated at this point with, with increased commercial that will be going in, hopefully there with some more residential, with these market-rate apartments, you're going to have more people there with some disposable income, hopefully, that will be able to put some more money into, into the community. And hopefully that will help to raise our home values here in Vista. And I think that's one of the things that we are all looking to do here in, in looking at the bigger picture for the community here. So again, I want to say thank you to all of the residents for coming out and talking to us and bringing some of these other concerns to us and to the Affirmed Housing because I think you listened to what the community said and you brought it back to the table and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, I pushed the button because I wanted to ask about the roundabout as well and the timing of that. Because I think there was a comment made, the sooner the better to get that in so that we can begin to adapt to its use and take advantage of the, of the smoother flow. So I don't know what we could do to accelerate that phase of the project, but I would like to suggest that there, if there's a way to do that, I'd like to see that.
The quickest way to probably get that done would be to condition it on issuance of a building permit. That means during their grading phase, they would be required to build the improvement and have it completed before they obtained a building permit.
Would that, you want to speak to that? I'd like to hear your, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think the issue that first comes to mind is the financing of the project and, and we have to have the ability to have permits in hand to get financing in place. And could it be started concurrently with issuance of a building permit, but then have some trigger? I mean, right now, it's, it's prior to occupancy. So starting it prior to...
So they're issued a grading permit, it's final. They're issued a building permit, and it's final. That's the occupancy. So the way it's set up right now, it would be completed before anybody lived in the project. If you wanted it to be done sooner, I think the developer's assertion is that they may have difficulty getting their financing to complete that piece of it without the building permits they need in hand to obtain their financing.
Well, I can understand. You can't just do that on the come, you know, out of your pocket. So I would like for you to work with staff to accelerate that timing. I'm not sure how to do that. I'm not the expert. But if you have a suggestion or thought to move that along quickly, I, I think that would be beneficial.
I mean, I think the developer is committed to building it as soon as possible. We can certainly look at what we can include in the conditions to mandate that.
Okay.
To work, I'm thinking of concurrent with commencement of construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, council member Campbell?
Just a couple of quick final questions for staff, because it got brought up a lot about traffic. Seems to be one of the big issues. What's the current level of service, so everybody knows, on South Santa Fe adjacent to the project?
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that. I'll have to call the traffic consultant and prepare the report up. I know he's got all the details, and unfortunately, I don't have the traffic report with me.
I'm Sam Cab, a traffic engineer with Urban Systems Associates, a consultant on this project. And your question was the level of service on South Santa Fe Avenue?
Yes.
The segment itself, between Civic Center Drive and Mar Vista Drive, is at level of service A.
Okay. And then, following the completion of this project, I'm assuming that that would remain at a service level A?
With the project, it's also a level of service A.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, is there a motion from anybody?
I'll move that we adopt...
Close the public hearing, right?
I move that we close the public hearing and that we approve and adopt the city council resolution for this project.
Do we have to approve the EIR also? The EIR and the project?
The, and the EIR and the project.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously.
And mayor and council, it wasn't a formal recommendation in the agenda report, but just want to make sure that you're okay with the establishment of a process to consider prohibiting access on public streets like Cypress. So we have to actually go forward.
I think we need to, we need to consider that.
Okay, so, I lost my agenda. Hold on just a minute. I got to find what my agenda is here. Okay, oral communications. I don't have any oral communications tonight. So, any reports from any members? I'll start down here. Councilmember Rigby, anything?
No, mayor. I just want to say thank you again to all staff for everything that they've done, not just for tonight's agenda, but through the summer, since our last council meeting, and welcome back to council.
Councilmember Coles?
I have nothing to add.
Councilmember Campbell?
No comments this evening.
Councilmember Aguilera? Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can hardly speak right now because of my throat. I've got a frog in there or something. You know, I have a couple of notes here. I can't figure out what, what I was trying to remind myself to speak about. So I guess it wasn't that important.
But while you're ahead.
Yeah.
I have, I have two things here. This one, okay. One, "My Fair Lady" is still playing at the Moonlight through this Saturday, August 30th. And then the final production of the season, "Catch Me If You Can," starts on September 10th. Visit themoonlightstage.com or vistixonline.com for tickets and information. And the second thing is the City of Vista Civic Gallery is welcoming entries for its photography exhibition called "Best Shot." Entries can be made through September 26th, and exhibition dates are October 12th through December 10th at the Civic Gallery here at the Civic Center, out in the hallway out there. More details can be found on our website, cityofvista.com. And that's the end of my things, but I hope everybody had a great summer, and we're all back to work now.
We are.
Yes, we are.
Mayor, if I could add that, just a reminder to the public that the city offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st, as will the library for Labor Day.
That's it?
That's it.
Then I think we're adjourned. Holy cow. I haven't had one of these long meetings in a long time.
Do you mind if I ask a question while you're here? Do you mind? Okay.